Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the meeting for this evening. If you all will rise with me for the -- actually, Ms. Caddell, if you would call the row first.
Here.
Here. Now, if you would rise with me for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If someone would move the agenda, please.
Don't move.
Thank you, if you have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, first up for tonight is tonight's spotlight about the Mount Daniel movement, and I will turn that over to Dr. Manning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, board members and community and staff. We are very excited tonight to have a very short spotlight on learning about the Mount Daniel Elementary School opening, finally. We are very excited to announce that today, actually, all of the wood -- they called them the boardwalks while they were there. The boardwalks have been removed. The trailers are starting to be disassembled, and over the course of the next several weeks, they will be taken out. And Tim Kasich, our outstanding principal at Mount Daniel, is here this evening and are excited to have all of those trailers and everything removed and have the entire site redone by the end of winter break. So, tonight, our spotlight is on welcome, welcome back to Mount Daniel. So, with that, we'll turn it over.
A morning at Mount Daniel has familiar routines. Buses arrive.
Morning.
Staff come to greet, and students head to class.
You guys are reporting to your trailer room.
But this day is going to be much different than any of the other days in more than a year.
So, first graders will be going to their old trailers, gathering with their class, and the teachers will be walking them over so that they can experience entering their first grade rooms, their brand-new rooms for the first time together.
Bigger, brighter, more inviting and engaging instructional areas. And for three rooms in particular, this move is altogether transformational. Because of the increased enrollment over the years, art teacher Jan Garrett, Spanish teacher Estrella Triata, and music teacher Carolyn Sweaterlitz have had to make do, some working off of push carts.
Well, I was in the trailer, so it was very tight, one sink. So, now you can see I have four sinks for the kids to wash. We have a new kiln room. So, before, even in the old art room, we had, you know, just in my storage room. And so, now the kiln is properly hooked up and ventilated.
As we were in the room, just getting to know, I said, "Did you see any words that you remember from last year?" I asked the first graders, and they're looking, and I go, "The colors. Oh, my gosh, rojo." And then they said them to me. I'm going, "Oh, great, you know? What else? What else do you see?" And they're looking around, and it's like an excitement. "Oh, my gosh, look at the words. They're here. They're all here."
This is actually the first time that I've worked here in six years that there has been a music classroom. That I've been on a cart transporting instruments to classrooms or available space. We're able to move so much. We do a listening activity where we listen to some classical pieces. Right now, we listen to the Hall of the Mountain King for this week. It's perfect for this time of year, you know? And we're tiptoeing around to the quiet part, and then it gets louder and it gets faster. And we actually have space to run and move fast with the music.
I know that song.
It's not just the students enjoying the new surroundings.
Setting it up.
The PTA really wanted to support our teachers. We know how hard they've been working, moving again and again. So, we had over 60 families donate food and drinks and money to buy a new Keurig coffee maker and stock their new teacher's lounge so that they could feel appreciated and sustained.
Let us get into state pledge.
A new building, new spaces, but the same faces in Mount Daniel routines.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Things that was really good to see, and it was, we were over at Mount Daniel, that's about a week ago now, a couple of days. But it was with Delegate Simon and Senator Siasson taking legislative work today. It was an amazing sight to see, that finished product, and we're proud of the work that's been done and the teachers who made it happen of getting everything moved over. And I'm quite sure they were ready to make that move over, too, and the time came. But it was very good, and I was very impressed to see what the final product is over there. And it's going to be a great space for all of our kids and teachers to be a part of and learn in over the next, over the next years that they're going to all be there when we, next year, move our second grade back over to there. But thanks to Tim for coming in and picking it up and keeping the ball going till the end of that project.
All right. So, next, we're going to move on to public comment. In accordance with school board bylaw 2.30, the time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Additional written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to the board and for the record, dissemination of request. All right. The first speaker's clip I have is Jennifer King.
Yep.
And if you'd come, just have a seat right at the, at the table there. Turn your mic on.
This one here?
Yes.
Okay.
Welcome.
Thank you. So, as you said, my name is Jennifer King, and I'm a Falls Church City Public School parent. I had a daughter who graduated from Mason High School a few years ago, and I currently have a seventh grader at Mary Ellen Henderson. His name is Carson King. I'm here tonight to ask that you consider offering American Sign Language as a world language option in the school district. Carson is a cancer survivor, but before he got to be a cancer survivor, he endured about three and a half years of chemotherapy, which was ended by eight rounds of cranial radiation. As you might imagine, to the medication and the radiation, he does suffer from a number of learning disabilities. One is language processing difficulty and short-term memory issues. He also suffers from attention deficit disorder. He learns best when he has hands-on repetitive activities that he can do over and over again. American Sign Language would offer him and other children the chance to learn in a way that best suits them due to the fact that the language is learned through both spoken word and through motion that reinforces it. Now, I realize that, you know, not every child is a childhood cancer survivor, but there's plenty of children who suffer from learning disabilities, including attention deficit disorder. So, for this reason, I think that a lot of children could benefit from the offering of American Sign Language as a world language option in the Falls Church City Public School curriculum. And I request that you consider that as an option in the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Valerie Budney.
My name is Valerie Budney, and I have a ninth grader at George Mason High School. As I, as I am here tonight, I represent 23 families that are interested in American Sign Language to be added to the curriculum as a world language in 2019 and '20 school year. It would help to increase the access of an advanced studies high school diploma. For that diploma, you need two years of two different languages or one year, or three years of one language. So, as, I've been here before, last year twice, so it's mainly the same things I'm reiterating, that American Sign Language would help fit the unique needs of each child, especially children with ADHD, reading difficulties, autism, or any other learning disability, because learning a foreign language often poses a lot of difficulty and obstacles. And many of these childrens have an inability to complete multiple years of a traditional foreign language. So, in that respect, it would help close achievement gaps. It'll also provide an inclusive learning environment where kids in, or students in general education and special education can take the same class together. It would help students with disabilities learn easier with a visual and kinesthetic tactile movement-type communication. And Fairfax County and Arlington County also offer American Sign Language, which are neighboring counties. Virginia public colleges and universities accept American Sign Language as a foreign language entrance requirement, and 200 other universities accept ASL as a foreign language, including some Ivy League schools. American Sign Language is the third most popular world language taught in college in the United States. I really want that, I really feel that families in Falls Church City want the best for their children, and I know you do, too. And I just feel like this is such, you're hindering, not you personally, but the curriculum is hindering a lot of these students to achieve their best, that they can achieve an advanced diploma if you take down the walls for these kids. Sorry, I feel very strongly about this. So, I know my child could benefit from this, but I know many other children that could, too. And not just in the high school, but in the middle school, and then other kids that are coming up through the Falls Church City school system. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And our final speaker's clip is for Jimmy Alberson.
My name is Jimmy Alberson, and I'm a 10th grader at George Mason High School. As a result of having brain cancer, I received chemotherapy treatment. The side effect of the treatment left me with a substantial amount of hearing loss. Even though I have spoken English all my life, when listening to someone speak, I have to give all my attention just so I can correctly hear what is being said. As a result of my hearing loss, I tried several times to learn Spanish. It was impossible for me to learn a brand-new language, which is challenging for anyone. Since listening to speech and videos is an essential part of learning another language, I was unable to learn due to my hearing loss. I want to be the most successful student I can be, but without taking a foreign language, I can't even acquire an advanced diploma. By adding Sign Language to the curriculum, it won't just help many people like me at George Mason who have hearing loss. It will, it will help students to, may have friends or family, be able to communicate with them better. Or even just students who want to take a different approach in a path of foreign language. School Board lists one of its five values as excellence and equity for all students. By adding Sign Language as a class, it obtains excellence and equity for all students. On behalf of my fellow students and I, we urge you to add Sign Language as a class for next school year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I was just going to say, I'm going to ask Dr. Manning to make a comment about.
Sure. First of all, thank you all for coming. We typically don't comment after a public comment, but I, I did want to reiterate something that we said last spring. In last spring, we did commit to offering Sign Language at the high school as an offering next year, and we stand by that commitment. So, it will be in the course catalog for next year at the high school as an option for students. So, if we have the enrollment, we'll certainly offer it.
And Chair, we did receive another letter, we're not here yet, and it involves in support of American Sign Language.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Caddell. Is there any other comments? If not, if someone would read us into closed calls. Mr. Chairman.
Pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose, to discuss or consider the identified subject matter, personnel under Section 2.23711A1, in particular, staff appointments, staff reassignments, staff resignations, staff retirement, staff performance, staff change in position, childcare leave, long-term medical leave, leave of absence, and advisory committee appointments. And real property under Section 2.23711A3, in particular, acquisition of real property for a public purpose where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy. And student matters under 2.23711A2, in particular, part-time student enrollment.
Thank you, Ms. Reitinger, if you have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Layton. Ms. Caddell.
Yes, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo?
Right.
Ms. Litten?
Aye.
Mr. Reitinger?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
And it should be about 15 minutes, and we'll be back.
All right, thank you. Second. All right, if you have a second. And if someone would please certify closing.
Mr. Chairman. Whereas the Falls Church City School Board has convened a closed meeting of this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.23711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church City Public School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. Oh, I'm sorry, this is certification, not the reconvening.
Mm-hmm. So, I'll check.
Only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion covering the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mr. Reitinger. Ms. Caddell. I'm still, if you have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Ms. Caddell.
Yeah, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo?
Right.
Ms. Litten?
Aye.
Mr. Reitinger?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
And Mr. Webb?
Yes. All right. No recollections for this evening. And the consent agenda, national consensus consent to approve the consent agenda, without objection, so ordered. All right. And we'll move on to business actions and information. First up will be the update on the Mount Daniel, from Mount Daniel and Thomas Jefferson Principles on recess, recent recess changes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to sort of set this up, I invited both Paul Swanson and Tim Kasich from Thomas Jefferson and Mount Daniel respectively to come this evening and just to kind of give you an update. I know that there was a lot of question, not a lot of questions, but a few questions earlier in the year about recess with the new Virginia code change, saying that recess time can be used as instructional time. And so, we did extend recess at both of our elementary schools to 30 minutes or more. And I know that there have been some questions that have come up in the community and maybe to all of you, and so. I invited Paul and Tim this evening to share with you kind of how it's going. So, I have about 90 seconds of content, I think, because I think it's going pretty well. But I'll let them sort of talk it through, so.
Our kiddos are having a really good time on the new equipment. Let me start with that. So, our first grade has their 30 minutes of recess built into their regular schedule throughout the day. So, some of the classes go out before lunch, some of the classes go out after lunch. They go out and they play on the equipment. They also have the opportunity to play on the blacktop, and the teachers or aides are out there with them covering recess. Kindergarten has a 20-minute block of recess that's built into the day, it's scheduled. They additionally have a 10 minutes, a flexible recess time. The teachers like having the autonomy to kind of decide, "Hey, my kiddos need a break. They're getting a little squirrely," which is an official educational term, especially when they're five years old. And so, they like to have that flexibility to say, "You know what? It's getting to be this time of day. They need a break. Let's get them outside. Let's get them to run around." So, we are meeting the 30-minute mandate with no problems, and with, like I said, to start off, we're just having a lot of fun with it. So, thank you.
There's, there's another educational piece of jargon, and it's known as, "Five-year-olds are not the only people who get squirrely." It's educational jargon. Recession's going very well at TJ. We actually had a teacher today who remarked that while, in the big picture, we're still sort of young in the year, she already feels like she has seen a marked improvement in just the overall behavior of her class, and that particularly for some of those younger kids, second grade, that extra recess has really helped. There's no significant downsides to it. There is a little bit of transition time that we're losing getting to and from the playground, but it's, it appears to be more than made up for by what we're seeing. And once again, just a major, a major expression of gratitude for the new playground equipment that both Mount Daniel and us are enjoying.
Thank you both very much. Are there any questions for, Ms. Layton?
Okay, this is kind of a basic question. Is, is what you have now enough? Do you guys feel like that's enough recess? To me, it still sounds like not very much, but how do you guys feel about whether or not it's enough and how the teachers feel about that?
Yeah, it's, it's a good question. I, I don't know that there would be like a consensus answer, honestly, at TJ. I think what we've told parents is that there is a balance to be had. On one hand, there is such a thing as letting kids be kids and acting in accordance with what all the research is telling us about the power of those kind of breaks. On the other hand, there is, there's curriculum to cover, and there's learning that is to be had there. So, it feels like, at least TJ, I think that we're in a pretty good place in terms of arriving at that balance.
And I would echo a lot of what Paul was just saying. Where I feel it might be a little bit different at Mount Daniel is that there's a lot of movement built into the general ed, education part of the classroom, class day, anyway. For example, when we saw the video earlier in Ms. Sweaterlitz's music class, there's time for movement. It's not just during recess. The kiddos have time built in throughout the day to get up and move and stretch themselves and, and interact with their peers.
Any other questions? Mr. Castillo?
Thanks for coming out tonight. Just a question about next year. Do you anticipate any challenges once second grade moves over to Mount Daniel in terms of recess? And will it, will it be easier at TJ? How's that going to play out?
No challenges. We got this. Actually, we've had a lot of early conversations now about the transition of second grade over to Mount Daniel. The bulk of those problem-solving conversations will start after winter break, and recess is certainly one of those parts of the day that we're going to be taking into consideration.
Yeah, I think there will be a fair amount of logistical pieces that we have to work through. We'll get there. We'll get there. In terms of recess at TJ, I think it'll be a non-issue, right? Because we are, we're losing close to 200 kids, and consequently, then we're freeing up the playground for an additional 30 minutes or so, so it won't be an issue at TJ.
Any other questions? Thank you both very much for coming out tonight and giving us a little bit of an update. Sounds like things are smooth sailing over there thus far, and we really appreciate that. Thank you. Next up, we'll be discussing the upcoming legislative package.
I'm actually going to invite Lila Wise, who's our legislative liaison, or lobbyist, to the table, and she and Ms. Litten have been working on the legislative package. So, Mr. Chair, with your permission, just turn it over to Ms. Litten. Ms. Litten, Ms. Wallace?
Great, thank you. And I want to thank Lila for working through this with me. She's answered a lot of questions since I am new to this, helping me to understand some of what's going on in Richmond and why some of these things are issues. So, I thought maybe we could just quickly walk through them, and I don't know if you want to go ahead and give a really brief explanation on, on maybe on each one of these and why we thought it was important.
Ms. Wallace?
Good evening. It's nice to see some of faces that I've seen in the past and some new faces, too. Oh, that helps, doesn't it? Yes. You'll notice that we have sort of a statement of what we believe, but the main thing about that statement is no mandates. This is, I think, one of the biggest things that I do at General Assembly, is try to keep the General Assembly members who just want to do whatever their constituents want, and they want a mandate on this and a mandate on that, and to say, "We have got to let school divisions have the flexibility." And please, I have some colleagues who say, "No mandates without funding." But as we know in Falls Church, funding is not what it looks like for other people in the state with our composite index and how little we get from the state. So, even if they gave us funding, it would still be an unfunded mandate in many cases. Now, I'd like to go on with some of the issues. Last year, when I was here, I talked about the School Health Advisory Board, and this is something that we've had on the legislative, in the legislative package for the last two or three years. This has become a difficult issue for us as educators at the General Assembly level because you get an awful lot of constituents who say about school health kinds of things that the school should be doing, whatever it is. And so, they, these are often very emotional kinds of issues. And so, when it comes in front of the legislators, they're like, "Yes, we need to do this." And we try to say, "But this, we may not have the funding to do this. We may not have the time to do this." Furthermore, a lot of these things, we may not, in public education, have the expertise to do them. Many of them are things like EpiPens, CPR, some of these other issues. I expect that we'll probably see Narcon this year because, as you probably read in Montgomery County, or not even in Montgomery County, in Maryland, the governor has said every school in Maryland has to have Narcon. Now, I've read that in Montgomery County, they said that they have never had, at the high school level, an overdose. Certainly, I don't think there's going to be a lot of overdoses at the elementary school level, but you've got somebody who really cared a lot about this and said, "We've got to do it." So, what this would do is if you get something like this, where you get constituents and legislators who come in and say, "Yes, we want to have Narcon in every school," that this could then go to this advisory board, which would consist of medical personnel and school personnel, and say, "Is this realistic for us to do this at the school level? Should the schools be mandated to carry out some of these kinds of missions?" We've had this in here for three years, not gotten there yet. However, Senator Barbara Favola, who represents Arlington, has been a real trooper about this, and she's changed some of the language in the legislation to direct the State Board of Education to do this, rather than it being a General Assembly Committee. So, we have high hopes for this, this year. You've seen the in-state tuition to students who are not yet permanent residents. In other words, students who are here in our schools and they are, do not have documentation. And it has been a big issue in Virginia almost as long as I've been doing this, and that is having in-state tuition for these students. If they did not have in-state tuition, many of them would not be able to, to afford to go to school. So, there, every year, there are efforts to curtail this. We've had an attorney general's opinion that said that they can get in-state tuition. As Ms. Litten had pointed out earlier today, one of the other issues with that is even now, with the situation the way it is, they are not eligible for financial aid. And so, if we manage to get this through, that may be the next step that we want to look at.
Yeah, and I would just add on that, about 20 states have done this. About half of those have done the piece, that's also the financial aid piece. But I think, as you said, in Virginia... as you said, in Virginia, we're starting with this, one step at a time.
Well, this may be, this is just an aside, this may be the last year that we have to struggle the way we've been struggling over the past few years. If in fact what happens in 2019, all members of the General Assembly are up for election, that hopefully we will end up with new people in office who will be much more willing to do things for schools. So, in 2019, when you're looking at who's running and elections, education should be their number-one priority. Another issue that many of the superintendents have talked about, and that is the articulation between community college and between the K-12. And I think Dr. Noonan can probably explain some of this even better than I can. I'll do the one that I'm really into, and then I'll let him do the rest. This is the math remediation. As you probably know, when students go to community college, one of the first things that happens is that they take tests to see where they stand as far as math and reading. Unfortunately, the tests do not align at all with what kids have had in high school. So, even though students are, all these students are passing the SOLs, but then they get to the community college, and the community college says, "No, sorry, you need remediation." And what happens here is the kid, remediation is done without any credits, so kids lose time and lose credits as far as moving on from, into the community college. There have been some efforts to say to the school, the K-12, "Would you guys be willing to go ahead and test kids at the end of 10th grade and see if in fact they do meet the requirements of, you know, what the community college is looking for?" And this may well be what will need to happen. And Dr. Noonan, you've got some other things here.
Yeah, I'll just very briefly talk about some additional pieces, particularly around the articulation agreements between high schools and community colleges and colleges and universities currently here in Northern Virginia with Northern Virginia Community College. We have a really nice relationship with Dr. Rawls, who's the president there and has been really, along with George Mason University, working on some of these articulation agreements. So, at our high school, we have a couple of dual enrollment courses. The issue for us that we would like to get some support from the legislature on is that when our students take dual enrollment courses at the high school, those credits do oftentimes transfer right into the community college and then on to a four-year degree program at George Mason, for example. However, they don't always fall into a pathway. There's not, they don't fall into like core requirements, and instead, they just fall into a general pot called electives. So, if you took an English course as a dual enrollment student and then you move on to the community college level, that just becomes an elective course and doesn't necessarily count towards the path that you're trying to go on. So, we are looking for some relief in that to make the courses that are taught through dual enrollment more focused when they get to that, to the community college and that four-year university as well. And one piece, just to sort of talk about briefly, and it's a little bit away from this, but I think it might be of use to the board, is there is a new program that has been developed between George Mason University and Northern Virginia Community College where it's a dual admittance program. So, you apply to both Nova and to George Mason at the same time, and if you get into both at the same time, Nova now will put you on a path of everything you take will fall into a major, as long as it's in one of their 19 pathways that they've established between Nova and George Mason University. And so, that is a good step in the right direction. So, what we're hoping, kind of going back into the earlier conversation, is that the high schools now can, if we do have some dual enrollment courses, that those will also fall into those pathways as well. So, students aren't taking it just for the sake of taking it.
Thank you. No, we do want to make sure that whatever we're doing in the high school applies to what they're going to get at the community college and that that then applies for four-year colleges. Now, I'll move to funding. Many of these funding ones you've seen every year, so I'll just talk about a couple of Looking at a review and update of the state education funding formula. This is talked about fairly frequently. Nobody wants to touch it. Nobody is interested in looking to see whether in fact what they're getting in education is what should be happening. But it, what they're looking at, I think, is having a J-LARQ study. Now, J-LARQ is the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Commission. Now, that doesn't sound like something that would apply to this, but it actually is anything that's happening in the state, in the Commonwealth. J-LARQ can go to what they've done and study it. So, we're looking at a study that would see, and what they're going to come up with, of course, is, "No, we're not funding public education the way we should." And then the answer is, "Okay, then what would you do about it? And are you talking about new taxes? Are you talking about diminishing services?" So, that whole thing is a Pandora's box that most people don't want to open up. The at-risk add-on is one of the few things in education funding where everybody wins. Most things in education funding, if somebody gets something more, then it's going to get taken away over here. What the at-risk funding does is, all it does is it measures the number of kids at risk in a school division, and that is free, kids are free and reduced lunch. And then there is a funding formula for each of those kids. So, even in Falls Church, where you get so little from the state in any of their funding formulas, at least in this, you would get something. I laugh, my, because my colleagues all laugh, say to me, "You're not going to get anything from it all." But no, we might get $100 or two, or maybe more than that, you think? Okay. Full funding standards of quality and all mandates. Ms. Litten asked me now, "What is this next one about? This prior practice of funding support services to school divisions." In 2009, when we were going into the Great Recession, the people at Legislative Services and the people who were on the funding committees said, "How are we going to get more from school divisions? What are we going to take away? Well, we certainly don't want to take away instruction. We're not going to touch," they say, "we're not going to touch the classroom." And so, what they did at that point is they reduced funding for support services. And there were some strange things that they considered support services. For example, guidance counselors, school psychologists, school social workers, in addition to people you would ordinarily think of as support services. And so, every year, we have been pushing that when they've got more funding, more revenue, that they go back and go back to the prior practice. And this year, it looks like there may be more funding, more revenue. They've talked about a couple of interesting revenue streams that might go to education. So, we'll see. I don't know whether you all get funding for the, from the Virginia Preschool Initiative? Yes. And what this would do, it's very, very strict kinds of rules for how you can use that funding. And so, this would ask for more flexibility in what you could do with it. There are certain kids that you have to identify, and these are the kids who would be eligible for this preschool initiative. There's other kids who have a lot of needs, and so, this might allow you to use that funding for everyone. And then, we of course support the continuation of the cost of competing factor. Ms. Litten said to me now, "What is a cost of competing factor?" This is something extra that we get because it, hiring teachers in Northern Virginia is much, much more expensive than it is hiring teachers in other places in the state. And so, this cost of competing factor sort of makes up for some of that. Certainly cannot make up for all of it, but does that. Now, the next one, and one that you all have loved for years and you all are looking forward to this, is public school calendar, the Labor Day bill, and returning control of the school calendar to school divisions. And very interesting, as Dr. Noonan said, we had, or Mr. Webb said, I think, that we had a nice meeting with Dick Saslaw and Marcus, from Marcus, Marcus. Yes, thank you. And Dick Saslaw has always been absolutely opposed to this, and he has been the major roadblock. And as we started talking about this with him the other day, and Dr. Noonan and Ms. Litten, you heard him say, "You are my witnesses." Well, maybe he wasn't going to be so adamant about it this year. And we talked a little bit about a new strategy that we're looking at. Both he and George Barker, who represents Alexandria, have said from the beginning, "But it doesn't really make any difference when you start school." And we keep saying, "Wait a minute. Our kids take these AP and IB tests. These are national tests, and these tests, we can't schedule them when we want to. They are scheduled nationally." And so, kids who are here, who don't start school until after Labor Day, may have three weeks less instruction than kids who are in school divisions that start school before Labor Day. More than half the schools in the state start before Labor Day. So, one of the things that we're going to do, they say, "Well, show us the statistics." Obviously, that is going to, if, doesn't show anything, we just believe, this is Dick Saslaw, they're all smart in Northern Virginia, and so, it doesn't make any difference if they have the extra three, three weeks. However, last year, for the first time, Fairfax County started school before Labor Day. So, they now have statistics that show what did their, now, obviously, we're not, we don't have the same group of kids, but anyway, it would be statistics anyway, that showed how did our kids do on these tests when they started after Labor Day, and how did they do when we started before Labor Day? Do we see any, any additional work if those kids started before Labor Day? So, we'll see if that works out. The rest of the things in the package, you've been there for years, and these essentially are saying, "Funding for schools should be funding for education, should not be used for other purposes." So, I'll be glad to answer any questions for you. I'm sorry, I've got a cold and I'm having a hard time speaking, but...
Thank you very much, Ms. Wise. Does any member of the board have any questions for Ms. Litten or Ms. Wise? Mr. Castillo?
So, we've just had a fairly significant election. It sounds like we're going into another significant election where people in the legislature could stand up and be counted on things. And maybe to show some more openness and receptivity to educational issues this legislative session, are we pulling our punches here? Are we really doing everything that we could be doing? I would, I compared this year's agenda to last year's, and frankly, it hasn't changed a whole lot.
No.
I don't see anything here about school safety in any pointed, clear way, so should we be aiming higher?
It's interesting what's going on now, and that is that there is a lot of talk of bipartisan things going on in two areas. The one that you just brought up, which was school safety, and there is bipartisan committees. And one of the neat things that happened in this last election was that there were four or five teachers elected to the House of Delegates, all Democrats, but teachers nonetheless. And so, there is certainly a push this year to try and do that, especially since everybody's running for reelection. And education is a big, big issue for many people in the state. The other area is school construction, and there is a bipartisan committee that is looking at school construction and going around, and they're actually assessing all the schools in Virginia. And some of the things are just absolutely amazing, how old some of the schools are in Virginia. I think they've got a couple that are over 100 years old, many that are over 50 years old. And so, that also is a bipartisan issue, and so, that is definitely a step. I think that many members of the General Assembly who have been resistant to some of the education things are looking at the 2019 election and looking at the kinds of things that are happening and the fact that especially, you know, Northern Virginia has been, we've been Democratic ever since, you know, we've been doing this. There's only one Republican left General Assembly from Fairfax County now. And what happened in this present election, especially for the, for the House of Representatives, were a lot of areas that had been heavily Republican turned Democratic. They flipped. And so, people are looking at that and thinking, "Hmm, maybe I need to revise some of the things that I've been blocking." But I'm an optimist. I will always give you this very positive point of view as to how that works, but I really think there's going to see, you're going to see some changes this year.
I respectfully ask that maybe we consider that new environment, maybe sharpen our pencils and go back and look at this list and ask ourselves, "What else could we be doing?"
Sure.
And Justin, I was going to mention, when I looked through the DSBA list of new items they're going to be lobbying for this year, one of them is change the SOQ to include funding for mental health and school safety. So, I don't know if you have any thoughts on if that's a realistic ask, if it would be something we might want to add to our list?
Yeah. The one, and Dr. Noonan heard it also, Steve Landis is the delegate from, he's from the Valley, and, excuse me, he's the chair of the House Education Committee. He's very powerful. And he said at the VAS conference that he was going to put something in to provide more funding for testing coordinators because he felt that guidance counselors were being forced to do a lot of testing kinds of things rather than actually working with students. And so, I can certainly add that to, that would be a good one to have here as part of your package.
Other questions?
I just would, you know, we're on the eve of the start of the Virginia School Boards Association Conference down in Williamsburg, and I'm really hopeful that as not only you look at the DSBA package, as you talk to colleagues from around the state, if there are other things that you feel like you'd like to add to the legislative package, I would encourage you to do that and certainly want to support you in every effort. And I don't think it's a bad time to be aggressive. I think it's a good idea to be aggressive this year.
Any other questions? My question would be, and kind of taking off of Dr. Noonan saying, about looking at potentially within our package, and Ms. Litten mentioned it a little bit there, of the funding for school districts to be able to look into security of the buildings and seeing how, finding the funding to potentially harden some of the kind of soft spots that are in buildings, or at least taking the inventory of buildings and seeing what potential is out there to have a resource or pool of money that the state potentially can provide for school districts to be able to do some of those kind of things. I know we've been doing some of that ourselves here, but I think this could be the opportunity and time to potentially look and look to Richmond and do some of that in helping districts with funding for that, because we've had enough situations and things to happen in and around Virginia to kind of at least put that out there for a talking point or at least an opportunity for funding that the state may look into and take advantage of this particular session.
Well, that's one of the big areas that the School Safety Committee is, Commission is looking at. In fact, they are meeting tomorrow and going to come up with... In fact, they are meeting tomorrow and going to come up with recommendations. And so we'll have a chance to look at those and see if they would fit into our legislative package. Now, the other, other thing is, is those of you who've been around for a bit know that during the session, that I sent something out to you every, I do it every Sunday, and Marty makes sure that you get it on Monday, and go through all the things that are happening that you would find of interest in, in the session during, during each week. And so at that point, anything that anybody wants to weigh in on, in fact, I appreciate getting as much feedback as I possibly can as looking at, well, these are the bills that are out there and saying, "Hey, Lilly, you need to, to see if you can do this," or, you know, "Here's some ideas for you." So want you to know that this is not something that's in stone, that it changes, it moves. This is just sort of a framework for right now, at the, before the session even starts and before we see any of the, you know, the budget stuff or anything like that.
Any other questions? Now, I want to thank you both for giving us this preliminary look over for the legislative package for this upcoming session. And as Dr. Noonan said, when we go down to the V S B A conference, it'll be an opportunity to hear a little bit more from what our colleagues around the state may have ideas and things and see what kind of works, pairs with what we have and what additional things may come up that we may want to add to our overall legislative package prior to us making a final vote on, on what we will go to Richmond with. But thank you both very much for your, for your work on this.
I do apologize, I came back, every time I come back from a trip, I end up getting something on the plane. And I think I did this time, so I'm having a real hard ti- time talking tonight. I usually do better than this, but thank you for listening.
Well, we appreciate it. I hope you feel, feel a little bit better, get something for that. All right, thank you both very much. All right, we're going to move on to textbook adoption.
Great, I'm going to invite up a couple of our really esteemed colleagues who were primarily responsible for the textbook adoption. And then before they talk, I'm going to turn it over to Lisa to talk a little bit about sort of the process. But Jen Fessedin, Jen is our math specialist here in Falls Street City Public Schools, and Steve Knight, who's our instructional technology specialist. And they were sort of personally responsible for moving through the textbook adoption. So Lisa, anyone set it up at all? Just going to turn it right over to Jen. Jen and Steve.
Hi, good evening. So this process started last year. The state, or the government, the Virginia Department of Education, sent out requests for committee members to be on the committee to review materials at the state level. And Joel Block, middle school math teacher, and I applied to be on the committees and were accepted. And so we both served on committees reviewing a wide range of materials from different publishers. We turned our findings into the state. The state worked through all of the different findings, presented their recommendations to the school board. And then the school board approved a list of publishers from which school divisions could choose from. So then we went from their recommend, recommended list and created our own committees here in Falls Street City. The committees were made up of teachers, C T Ls, collaborative teacher leaders for mathematics, parents, administrators, Steve for the technology part of it. And we met several times over a five-month period, reviewing the materials approved by the state of Virginia. We reviewed three materials for elementary school, three publishers. And I just wanted to point out, we're calling this a resource adoption, not a textbook adoption, because we believe that there is not one program that meets the needs of all children. So we are adopting as a resource to support our curriculum, which is, which are the S O Ls. So this will be one tool that we use to differentiate, differentiate our instruction as teachers use it as a resource for their students. And I just wanted to be clear about that because I think I forgot to mention that at the beginning. So we're trying to call it a resource adoption, not textbook adoption. And so we ended up looking at three for elementary school, even though there were only two on the approved list. We looked at five, I think, at the state level for elementary school. Only two were approved by the board. And we looked at three, we looked at one that wasn't originally on, that was not submitted for approval, because they were approved for middle school and high school. And so we wanted to make sure that if the middle, if Big Ideas, the company name is Big Ideas, if they were chosen for middle, middle school and high school, we wanted to make sure that we had reviewed their program for elementary school because possibly it could provide a cohesive resource for teachers. It ended up not working out for elementary school. There were many S O Ls that were missing. There wasn't content and materials addressing some of the S O Ls. And, you know, the company was great. They offered to create things, but it was just, it was not going to be what we needed. So we ended up just reviewing in greater detail Pearson and Vision 2.0 and Hoot and Mifflin Hardcore Go Math for elementary school. The committee, as you can see on the, the rubric, I did a snapshot of the rubric. The Hoot and Mifflin Hardcore and Pearson were very close, scoring very closely on the rubric. However, the Hoot and Mifflin Hardcore, the Go Math, was a little stronger in some areas that we felt were important. They were, the areas were stronger in math workshop, technology integration, problem solving, careers for students, professional learning for teachers, and support for English learners. And so the committee chose and recommends Hoot and Mifflin Hardcore Go Math for elementary school adoption. And then middle school, we reviewed three different publishers, Pearson and Vision 2.0, Hoot and Mifflin Hardcore Go Math, and then Big Ideas Learning. And there was a very clear frontrunner with these three publishers for the middle school content, grade six, seven, and eight. I brought some with me, if anybody wants to flip through them, I'm happy to grab them and pass them around if you want to look through any of the books. But, and the materials provided, there were also online codes for you if you would like to access any, anything online. The Pearson and Vision 2.0, and Steve, please jump in if you would like.
Sure.
No, you don't have to, but. We felt like the, again, the math workshop components were stronger. We're moving to a math workshop model for math instruction, K eight, at least K eight, which is basically a differentiated way to teach math, so that it's not whole group instruction, everybody sitting in front of the teacher for the whole math class. The teacher gets to work with small groups of students to personalize the instruction more. And we thought that the Pearson and Vision would do a nice job with that in middle school. The tech component was much stronger in middle school for Pearson. The level of abstraction was more difficult and rigorous for middle school. There were more real-world applications, more support for English learners, and offered more choice for students. And that was, those were the biggest takeaways from the Pearson and Vision program. And so the committee recommends the Pearson and Vision 2.0 for middle school adoption. And then high school is algebra, geometry, and Algebra II. Is this, did you get to you? Okay. We reviewed the same three companies, Pearson, Hoot and Mifflin Hardcore, and Big Ideas. The Hoot and Mifflin Hardcore was interesting because the, the textbooks that were submitted to, to the Virginia Department of Education for review were the old textbooks. So when we got these textbooks, they were very much old textbooks that had many problem sets and not much differentiation and no real-world applications. They, they have created a new program for Algebra, Algebra II honors, Algebra, Geometry, Algebra II honors, but it wasn't ready for the state in time. So we, so that is why you see the Hoot and Mifflin Hardcore scored 59 and a half, because it was just a traditional textbook that we have sitting on shelves already. And then Pearson was the clear favorite of the committee for Algebra, Geometry, and Algebra II honors for the same reasons, math workshop differentiation. The materials for tier-two instruction were stronger with Pearson. The navigation, the teacher navigation, being able to navigate the program efficiently, and contributions to the real world were stronger with Pearson. We looked at the, at three different categories, instructional design of materials, professional learning and support in alignment with the portrait of the, of the graduate and international backloriot. So the committee, the high school committee recommends Pearson and Vision 2.0. So the Hoot and Mifflin Hardcore Go Math for K five, and Pearson and Vision six through Algebra II honors. That's the big overview of what happened. Sorry, I just like to talk.
One of the things I think, and I had the privilege of being part of all the committees and, and seeing how different teachers are talking about the technology integration piece, of course. But one thing I want to assure everyone is that, you know, that the technology was not something that necessarily made people decide. It was a really great conversation about, are, are we ready for the tools? Are those tools important to us? And I would like to say that I think the increase of technology of the elementary schools and clearly maintaining the infrastructure at the high schools has really helped our teachers see this more as a valuable kind of part of a textbook. These resources are really important. And one of the things I think when we saw with Pearson and Hoot and Mifflin is they're starting to employ more of the adaptive technologies that's out there. Being able to have a student go in and just do something as simple as a practice as part of their textbook. Now it's not write it down on a piece of paper, it's actually going, entering into a program that is adaptive. So if a student takes, takes, you know, tries to answer the question, can't, asks for a hint, they get a hint, they go back, it's a brand-new, different question. If they answer it wrong a second time, then the actual next question is something easier. So it adapts as they're moving forward, and it's giving them what they need. And that's amazing differentiation, that's amazing benefit from that tool. As we think about integrating these resources in the classroom, all teachers were excited about that, regardless if they are at J T P or at the high school. They were all open-minded and ready to see these pieces of technology integrated, which is amazing. When you think about techno, textbooks and resources, we don't want to put it in the hands of, you know, teachers. In five years from now, they're outgrowing this resource. These resources, because they're digital, are going to evolve. And, and we're going to see it integrated more and more into the classrooms. So we had amazing teachers that were very critical about it, wanted to know more. We spent a lot of time logging into the resources and kind of kicking around and looking at all the sites. We did a lot of great, have conversations about not being overwhelmed by so many resources because those resources are just there for potential. And as we start doing more professional development and learning, they're going to be able to start utilizing more of that, so.
One of the parents of the committee even paid her son, like, tour money to go through the different components of the program this summer. So Pearson was his first choice, too. Yeah, so we're on a seven-year adoption cycle, and the state was behind a little bit with putting their recommendations forward. So that, so we are a little behind adopting. Loudon, they too are adopting Go Math, K five, or Elementary School and Envision Secondary. And they purchased last year, they like got in there right as they were releasing the, the approved list. But we wanted to make sure that we were really thoughtful, and we took our time and involved all stakeholders and wanted to make sure we were making the right decision, which took us into this school year.
Thank you both very much. Are there questions? Mr. Reinger?
So I, I don't have any questions about the textbooks. I think you guys have both forgotten more about math textbooks than I'll probably ever know. My, my question was really one, and I don't know the answer to this one. On middle school and high school, Pearson was the very strong favorite. And on the elementary school, it was sort of neck and neck with Hoot, Hoot and Mifflin. Is there value to having a consistent stack and using Pearson at the elementary school level, even though it, you know, it was just a few points below the other? Or is it just segregated in a way that you really want to pick the best breed at each level?
We actually talked about that, yeah, because they were very close. But once we, so we met again, the elementary team met again because of that. And so we dug deeper than we even had the first time. And we felt really strongly that, especially the primary teachers, felt really strongly that the Go Math program presented the materials in a more conceptual way than Pearson and Vision did.
Other questions? Ms. Litten?
I have just one kind of big-picture question, so I don't know if this is hard to answer. But when I think about it, we, we kind of have the S O Ls that are maybe more content. And then we have our I B program, which maybe is more how we do things. How hard is it to find tools that are really kind of aligning with what we're trying to do as a district? Do you feel like this aligns pretty well with what we're trying to do? Or are there some mismatches?
Yeah, so there are, there are some mismatches because it's a textbook that was created for the nation. So I did ask Pearson about that, because that was one of the parent comments. And I said, and, and it did score lower than, I mean, there were less points in the, in that rubric section. But I did ask them specifically about that because it's, it's an important part of who we are. And we want to make sure we provide our students opportunities for inquiry and contributions to the real world and things like that. And they were able to give me good ways to turn some of the projects that they had into even bigger projects and to kind of tweak some of the things that they provide in their Common Textbook for All to suit our school district. And we're, and offered to provide that professional development to our teachers. So I did specifically ask them about that. And so I think that with the right professional development for teachers and support for teachers beyond when the company leaves, I think it will fit nicely. Yeah, yeah.
Other questions? Mr. Castillo?
Hey, Mr. Chair, I was wondering if you could talk about the scoring and the weighting? Because it, it looks as if there's something there as to how you do that, but I, I don't know what it is. And also the, the weighting across issues should, well, we'll answer that first question, then I'll ask the next one.
Yeah, sure. So in our rubric, and I'm happy to send the rubric, the full rubri, oh, the rubric was linked.
Oh, it's, it's LinkedIn there.
Okay. So.
But it looks like the rubric was equal across, like it was weighted equally for one, two, and three.
It was.
So, okay, so that's, that answers my next question, which looks like all these materials are not ideally aligned with I B and the, the, I mean, that seems to be a big gap. And I was wondering if you could talk about that? Because I, I thought maybe it was like 50, 25, 25. But if, if they're all equal, then.
Oh, no, no, there were different point totals for each section. Is that what you were asking?
Well, right, I mean, for example, elementary, section one gets 52 points, section two is 20.5.
They were, yes, they did not have the same point total for each section.
So what was the weighting?
Uh, there wasn't a weighting. I can add up the point totals if you'd like. There was just a toll, out of a, so there were five, five points for each item on the rubric.
So the items were each worth the same.
Mm-hmm.
The same rating that teachers gave there.
Well, there were less items in the rubric for the last section. So each item on the rubric.
Oh, it was five per item, but some sections had more items?
Exactly.
Section one.
Section three might have only had four items.
Section three had the least amount of items. Section one and section two were way more involved and had many more rubric, little sections to the rubric. So no matter what, even if they scored five points for each section that last sec, in, in section three, it would still score lower than the other sections because there were less components to look at.
So it is a de facto rating system. There are some things that were more important than others in some ways, if you look at it that way.
And so is there a way to do grade on a curve a little bit more to give more weight to the alignment with the I B and profile of the graduate? Or are you comfortable that there's sufficient alignment there?
I think that after talking to the publishers, I, before talking to the publisher about that specifically, brought some concerns. But when I talked to the publishers specifically about that section of our rubric, I think that they were able to provide me with enough information and opportunities to make their textbook, which will become a resource to us, align with I B. So we're not following this textbook as a textbook. It will be a resource, a supplement to our curriculum. So we'll still have our. information and opportunities to make their textbook, which will become a resource to us, align with IB. So we're not following this textbook as a textbook, it will be a resource, a supplement to our curriculum, so we'll still have our assessments that teachers make, our projects, our mathematical tasks, and then this will just be a resource. I feel comfortable after speaking with the publishers about that section.
Okay.
And one of the things that happened prior to looking at the textbooks?
Textbooks, was looking at the standards of line and as they changed, they were mapped out for scope and sequence and we looked at PYP, NYPD, and DP standards as well and have those embedded within our scope and sequence as well.
Thanks.
Any other questions? If not, if someone would make a motion, please.
Chair, I move that the School Board adopt Houghton, Mifflin, Harcourt, HMH, Go Math, and Pearson Education, Inc., and Vision 6-8 and Algebra 1, Geometry, and Algebra 2.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Litten. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, oppose. Thank you very much. Thank you all very much.
I want to take just a second to thank Jen and Steve for their incredible service to this project. It's been really a big deal and they have handled it beautifully, so thank you for your leadership around this.
Thank you all very much.
Can you move around for the budget, please? Maybe?
And with that, next up will be the funding of the math resources adoption. Very real quick.
Thank you, thank you so much for changing that to the adoption of our math resources. So the items you just approved in total cost $210,000, $210,775. So when we look at that cost, the books for K5 were just over $104,000 and the books for grades six to 12 were $106,000. So that would be the total to purchase them all upfront right now. We currently have funding of $130,000 in our textbooks account, which leaves us with a gap of $80,775. Right, in order to ensure that we're well-prepared to implement these books next year, we would like to purchase them all this year. So to make this funding complete, we would like to use $80,775 from our contingency reserve. We currently have funding in that reserve of $221,500, so that would leave that balance at $140,725. So overall, these math resources are about $80 a student, so tonight we seek your approval to do a budget transfer from our contingency account into the textbook account to fully purchase these materials.
Thank you very.
I definitely spoke to, but I guess.
These were not the first quotes that we received from the companies. I worked with them and I even offered to rent a U-Haul and go pick them up because they were charging us so much for shipping and handling. So the original quotes, the original quotes totaled about $250,000 and so I've worked with them to take things off where I didn't feel, feel like we needed the components or, and I, and worked with shipping and handling, so we were able to get them down from $250,000 to $210,000.
Thank you very much for those great negotiating skills you had over there. That was a bit much going to getting your U-Haul driving down, but hey, but I appreciate the offer of doing it.
Are there any questions for, for Ms. Michael? If not, I will entertain a motion for adoption.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Falls Church City Public School Board approve a budget transfer in the amount of $80,775 from the reserve for contingencies to textbooks to fund the math resource adoption.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Litten. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, oppose. Thank you very much. All right, next up will be adoption of the superintendent's goals. Dr. Ninen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do you all have a copy? Can you see a copy on board docs? No. Okay.
I have one saved on my screen, so I've got.
All right. Let me talk them through and, yeah, if we can maybe do that just a half, that'd be great. So the last time I presented the, my goals to the board, there was some really nice feedback that I took into consideration and thought about with respect to specifically the idea of having a specific goal around becoming an IB, from your IB school system in the country. Because if, my takeaway from our conversation was, if we truly are going to be that, the way that we work and the way that we do things should just be rooted in and sit on top of this foundation called the International Baccalaureate Program. And so I've reworked my goals in a couple of different ways to sort of reflect that. And the first big thing that I did was I included in here as just sort of a preamble, some language that says that, you know, that's the, the IB program is the foundation upon which all of our curriculum instruction and planning is connected. We believe that the IB program positions our school system perfectly in the context of the Virginia State Department of Education's Profile of Graduate. Therefore, in lieu of developing a top-level goal of meeting our mission statement, and then I've included our mission statement in there that talks about it, it is, it is simply our intention to weave the work of IB into all of our actions here in Falls Church City Public Schools. So then from there, I have, I eliminated the one goal that was around IB and I rewrote a new goal one. And goal one is around deploying best practices for teaching and learning. And here it's, it's under priority one, that's linked to the triennial plan. The focus is on student-centered teaching and learning and it hits two, three different strategies, strategies 1.1, 1.3, and 1.4. It talks about quality core instruction, instructional leaders making fair and equitable outcome decisions for students, and then ensuring that our program decisions are measuring the performance of all students, including those students that may be in special education, free and reduced lunch, or ELL to ensure that we're meeting quality standards set out by the state and by federal guidelines. So in order to do that, the goal then became, by June of 2020, all of our schools will have clear definition and support around high-quality classroom instruction aligned to the IB approaches to learning and approaches to teaching for all students in tier one and a structured and timely identification process for students at risk of failing or in need of targeted intervention, extension, or enrichment. So in other words, what we're doing is we're talking about the quality of instruction in the context of those approaches to learning and those approaches to teaching and how are we going to weave those together to make sure that our best practices in tier one incorporate those elements. And our teachers are doing that on a pretty broad level already through the unit planning that they're doing, but we're going to continue to update the unit planners, we're going to continue to talk about best practices in curriculum and instruction. And as Lisa continues to work on the instructional model here in the city of Falls Church, that instructional model will also infuse the ideas of International Baccalaureate Program into that. The other sort of bigger move that I did is I took out the column that was called Evidence of Effectiveness. I think it's premature to know what the evidence of effectiveness is because I haven't done it, so we don't have any evidence yet of whether or not we've been effective. So rather than filling that column with a bunch of strategies that could be evidence, what I, what I moved to do was to take many of those strategies that were in the Evidence of Effectiveness column and move them under action steps, that those would become things that we would do to really support our work. So now I'm on page two. So then the sub-goal for that first big goal one would be by June of 2019, each school will collaboratively implement teacher resources clearly articulating tier one instruction, literacy instruction. And so that means that our professional learning communities will be working with our reading specialists in the division, will engage and implement the components of the instructional framework, and we, our collaborative teams will consistently, consistently use a problem-solving model to make database decisions impacting language arts literacy instruction for all students. And that would be in tier one. In addition to that, we would do the same with mathematics instruction, that our professional learning with our math CTLs and math specialists in the division would happen on a routine basis, engaging with and implementing components of the instructional framework and then also using the problem-solving methods for students that are struggling to learn within that tier one. Then the intention is, in the spring, or later towards the end of the year, is to go back and identify, how do we do on these components? And at that point, populate that Evidence of Effectiveness column and then be able to talk through, what did you do that supported us either meeting this goal or not meeting this goal? If that makes sense. So that was the first goal. The second goal is around special populations and I want to just take a second to give you all a little bit of feedback that we've received from our community around special populations. As an outcome of the work through the Family Resource Center and working with the community-based board of parents that came out of that, one of the things that was evident to us through some conversations was that our special populations, parents and students don't like being called special population. And I get it, you know, and as we talked it through with the parents, they said, why are you calling us special populations? We're just like everybody else, we just need a little, something different. So, so we are going to revise and revisit what the language of that goal is going to be, but I did want you to know that that is something that we're paying attention to. But for now, goal two is working with our English language learners, our special education students, and our students who are in poverty. And here we're also again talking about student-centered teaching and learning. And within this goal, we say by September 2019, each school will create an action plan based on student data that supports SMART goals to close the achievement gap as measured by SOL performance and other SOL-aligned performance assessments. And that was an additional piece that I think came out of the conversation last time was, don't make it all about the SOLs, are there other performance assessments and the like that we can look at? And there are. So we're going to look at some other aligned projects that students do that are based on the SOLs, right? Or looking at our IB outcomes and the like. So under that, though, however, there is some language around SOL data, because I just, I think it's important to put it in here just to have. But each, and again, to reiterating that each school will have a plan based on academic outcomes for students with disabilities, students who are English language learners and students who are living in poverty. And in your packet this evening, you also received a copy of the template that we're using for the school action plan. Looks like this, you may have seen it last time. But this school action plan is completely aligned to these goals and these goals then are completely aligned to the placemat and division goals. And so the idea now is that our principals have worked closely with their staff, and we actually went through them with the principals today, and they have been working through goals that are aligned to these goals and aligned to the placemat at the school level. So they're developing site-based goals for their students that are in poverty, their students that have disabilities, their students that are English language learners as well. And in there, what we've used as our measure is the Virginia Department of Education's indicators for accreditation. So you may remember a while back, Jeanie Seabridge came and did a presentation for us and said, here is where we need to be by this period of time. Over the next several years, all of our students are going to need to be at least at 70% performance, regardless of whether they're a student with disability, a student who's an English language learner, or a student who's in poverty. So what, what we've done is, in this goal, we have said that math students and English students will achieve at least 70% or 75% respectively pass rates in those two disciplines or there will be a decrease of 10% in their failure rate from the previous year. And what that does then is it allows us also to meet the accreditation standard from the state through the hold harmless. So for example, if our pass rate in special ed for 2019 needs to be in mathematics 54%, we're still shooting for 70%. But if we decrease the failure rate by less than 10%, we will still meet the state requirement within the accreditation matrix. So we're trying to maintain that high level of expectation for all of our kids, regardless of their disability status, their poverty status, or their English language learning status. And I, and I think that's a good place for us to land. We have a very small community of kids that are in each of those categories. We know our kids really well, our teachers are highly committed, we have some really great resources on the ground, and we have some really great new folks that are helping us also who are our triad, right? So Seamus O'Connor in special ed, Jennifer Santiago in ESOL, and then Julie McLean working with our MTSS work as well, looking at intervention. And there you will see another, kind of going down on the next page, another sub-goal, looking at targeted collaborative teaching teams participating in professional learning with each of those people that I just mentioned. So here you'll see, one is working with the special ed coordinator, the next one is working with the LEAP coordinator, and the last is working with the MTSS coordinator. And under each of those three sub-goals, which are around each of those coordinators working with our schools, there are some action steps. So the expectation is that there's going to be formal and informal observational data that's used, looking at literacy and numeracy. We're looking at revising our curriculum documents in PYP, NYPD, and DP, unit planners, core syllabi, and the like, looking at other observational data to give feedback on differentiation strategies, looking at collaborative models for instruction, looking at timely tailored intervention to provide and reteach and reassess for students, and then developing and opening our FRC, a Family Resource Center, which is one of our strategies and we've been able to do that. So again, same process here, we've kept the, the right-hand column empty, which is our Evidence of Effectiveness, and we'll populate that at the end of the year. And then the last goal is the operations goal. And here we are looking at, by 2020, developing operational processes and systems that'll be aligned to support our triennial plan with 100% fidelity and show growth over baseline in our systems efficiency and effectiveness measures. We will, at the work session next week, bring you some samples of the work that our operational departments are doing that are aligned to this, these goals and the division goals that are also done on this same action plan template. So the idea here, and I hope it's coming through, is that there is complete alignment from top to bottom and bottom to top. Everything that we're doing supports and builds on each other and so does the triennial plan. I'm pretty excited about creating that alignment because it helps us focus up. So here you'll see, so this year, some of the things that we're going to do, extending study of the operational areas, develop baseline measures, reviewing operations and prioritizing areas of growth. Some of those action steps are looking at formal and informal surveys, developing an understanding of how each department supports the triennial plan. During budget development, all of our planning will be linked to the triennial plan as it was last year, and those operational baseline measures are going to identify work that the departments will engage in and then help us identify what the priorities coming out are. This year, each of our departments are developing between one and three SMART goals that are consistent with those baseline measures. They'll identify their progress towards those SMART goals and look at monitoring along the way. And then in 1920, begin reporting annually against those baseline measures and then identifying in a work session, future, future work reporting out. So, so it has been sort of an overhaul of the superintendent's goals since the last time we met, but I, I think you all did a nice job of sort of pushing me to think about these a little bit differently, particularly in the context of if we're truly an IB division, why are we writing an IB goal? Should be the undergirding for everything we do and then really thinking about the alignment pieces, this work along with the triennial plan in our schools and the top-level placemat plan as well. So with that, Mr. Chair and School Board members, I'll stop in hopes that these are acceptable to you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ninen. Are there any questions for the superintendent?
Are there any questions for the superintendent? Mr. Anderson?
Not so much a question. I'm not sure we actually did get the templates. Maybe it's a Word doc issue, because I'm still trying to reload.
It's in the document.
It's in. Right, okay.
It could be a Word doc issue.
Okay, thanks. That clarifies that one. Okay.
Mr. Castillo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just on page two, page one, it mentions in this first bullet, our reading CTLs. Is that CLTs? Is that collaborative learning teams?
This is collaborative team leaders.
Okay. Lots of TLAs there, so maybe.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that was defined elsewhere.
It should spell out exactly.
Yeah. That would be helpful. So on page three, with goal two, it says, "Students will achieve at least a 70% pass rate." Does that mean they'll get a score of 70%? Or does that mean that 70% of the student cohort passes?
It's the latter.
Okay.
And so I can clean that up and make it more clear.
Okay. And then when you talk about a 10% decrease in the failure rate, that means if the failure rate is 10% in one year, if it goes to nine, that's...
It's nine.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sorry. That, again, is aligned to the accreditation matrix and the safe harbor provision that's within that. So that's where that came from. I think one of the comments was, from the last time, how'd you come up with this? Or did it come out of thin air? And in some ways, I wouldn't say it was totally out of thin air. It was based on data. But a better way, I think, to calibrate these are within the context of what the state's asking us to do.
And again, this is, are we talking apples and oranges here? These are fifth grade this year versus fifth grade next year?
We'd like to look at figuring out how to look at it through a cohort lens, but currently, what we are looking at is grade level by grade level. So it is apples and oranges, it's two different sets of kids.
I would challenge you to...
Yeah. It does give us some good programmatic information, oftentimes. It may not give us great student data that we can build out on, but it does potentially show strengths of a program and areas of growth within a program.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Anderson?
Doctor Ninnan, the only other thought I had was, actually, on the very last item, on the very last page, you're talking about as an action step, identifying a work session to report out on progress in the spring of 2020. It is awfully close to June of 2020, and so I'm wondering if it might make sense to build into it some earlier time periods, just to check in as progress goes forward.
Sure. Yep. Mr. Ryan here.
So, Mr. Castillo killed my one question. I wanted to know about the 10% failure rate, but you, we've solved that one. I just would say that I think the way you've done, you've built IB into the programmatic approach on the first and second goals is better and more effective than the last time. So I appreciate all the work that went into it. It reads very well. Thank you.
Mr. Castillo?
I have one more question. So you've got SMART goals. One criticism that I've heard about SMART goals is that it tends to be constrained because you want to accomplish it. Should you add a BHAG here somewhere, where you, again, kind of aim a little higher and swing for the fences? Or do you want to get the, get the state of play a little more built out before you do something more audacious?
I think our BHAG is the mission statement in many ways. It's for us to be the premier international baccalaureate school division. And I think if we are making progress on our strategic measurable, attainable, results-oriented, time-bound goals, that we will move towards that. I'm not sure that it's going to be as incremental as perhaps a SMART goal might indicate, because I think even small shifts moves us exponentially closer to achieving that goal. I hear your point, though. And I would, I would say, in some ways, the 70% is somewhat of a BHAG for some of our populations that struggle.
And I think it would help if you could message that out and explain that, because I think that would be really helpful to put that into context. I guess the only other thing I might suggest, and I've said this before, but do we want to be the premier IB school division out of eight in the country? Or do we want to be the premier school division that got there because of IB? And I would say the latter is more inspiring.
Also wanted to just chime in and say, I want to thank you for going back, getting the feedback, taking it to heart, and putting forward a much cleaner and smoother superintendent goals and thinking them out from the comments that were made. Really do appreciate that. And with that, if I could, I'm going to make a motion, if anybody can see it, via the board desk.
All right, okay. Mr. Chair, I moved that the school board adopt superintendent's division-wide goals as presented.
Thank you very much, Mr. Castillo. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Thank you very much. Next up will be approval of the triennial plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We are asking for approval of the triennial plan as presented the last time. We did receive a couple of questions from Mr. Anderson, but beyond that, I think everybody was satisfied, so we're asking for approval of the triennial plan.
Are there any questions? Mr. Anderson?
And just for the record, I will say, and my questions were fully satisfied. Thanks for the answers.
You're welcome. Glad to help.
Mr. Castillo?
I was just going to make a motion.
Go right ahead.
Mr. Chair, I moved that the school board approve the FCCPS 2018-2020 triennial plan as presented.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Litten. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Thank you very much. Next, we have the verified enrollment of Weldon Cooper.
I'm going to actually turn this right over to Kristin Michael, our chief operating officer, to walk through our verified enrollment and where we are with Weldon Cooper.
Ms. Michaels.
Thank you so much. So we are back to late fall, the very beginning typically of our budget process for the next year. So each year, as we do in the fall, we receive projections from what's always been known as the Weldon Cooper Center at the University of Virginia. Their official name is the Demographics Research Group. And again, this year, they provided us with enrollment projections. I'm going to wait just one second until we have the slides on the screen. Right. So when Weldon Cooper prepares projections, which they do for fostered city public schools and also for the state, when they're developing the allocations for sales tax, they're based on their projections as well, they look at two different types of data. They look at birth data, right? And they get those from the Virginia Center for Health Statistics. And those tell them how many children are born in each locality each year. And then they also use historical and current fall membership enrollments. And those are provided to Weldon Cooper by each jurisdiction. So when we met last month and we went over our enrollment projections for September 30th, those were sent to Weldon Cooper to be the basis for projection in terms of current enrollment. So when Weldon Cooper looks at developing projections, they also use a grade progression ratio methodology. And that grade progression methodology looks at, just like we did the last time we met, how many students in each grade are moving forward to the next grade, right? And because grade level projections fluctuate significantly, if you remember when we looked at them last time, they weren't all consistent, they use a methodology where they use multiple years of those grade level projections when they're developing our estimates. And they do that to reduce the noise or the impact of one year where you have a significant variance. So what they do when they're preparing our projections is, for kindergarten, they're really relying on those birth ratios. So what percentage of the kids that are born enroll in kindergarten? And then for each subsequent grade, what are those multiple-year grade-level progressions? So the other thing that we just wanted to mention on this next slide, which I'm on slide four, is student enrollment changes each year, right? So Weldon Cooper advises, and most jurisdictions do, completely re-project membership the next year. And we're really looking at the enrollment projections for the coming fall as we think about developing the budget. And then those out-year projections, which are also updated each year, are really used for that long-range planning, for things like the CIP, for example. And as I noted, Weldon Cooper also prepares the projections for statewide data. So they, if you remember, many years back, we did a triennial census, right? Where we said to forum home, where we got how many child-school-aged students lived in each jurisdiction. Now Weldon Cooper is projecting that enrollment for kids in grades K through 12, and that's what's used to allocate out sales tax statewide. So these are the enrollment projections that they gave us for fiscal year 2020 and future years. It's important to note that when Weldon Cooper does our projections, they're not projecting our preschool program, so they're only projecting grades kindergarten through grade 12. So what this chart shows on the top, that very first line, the 1819 year, those are our students as of September 30th. So when you look all the way across, that 2,574, that's our students this current school year as of September 30th. And then you can see they've provided us with projections starting with 2019, 20, and moving forward. So for next year, they're projecting that we're going to have 2,629 students. And you can see that when they give us projections, they give us the upcoming five years, and then they give us a long-range forecast, which is shown in the chart at the bottom. This is a graphical representation of our enrollment. The red is the actual enrollment, and the blue dots are the projection. And I wanted to talk just a little bit more in terms of that grade progression ratio. Last time, I had showed you data just looking at the last three years' worth of students. So they've provided us with a little bit more information that I thought might be helpful to share with the board. So when we think of that grade-level progression, the way they've done it on the chart that follows is, they take the number of students in a particular grade, and they divide that by the number of students from the previous grade in the previous school year. So they've given two examples here. So, for example, the second grade, first grade progression ratio is found by dividing the current number of second-grade students by last year's number of first-grade students. So if you have a ratio that's larger than one, it means you have more students coming to school that were not previously enrolled. And then if you look at a ratio that's smaller than one, it means you have more students that are transferring out to private schools, homeschool, moving, or other components. So this is that grade-level progression ratio chart that Weldon Cooper provided, going back from 2009 all the way to 2018. And I thought this might be helpful to provide to the board after our conversation last time in terms of that data. Right? So when you really look at it, it really, of course, mirrors exactly what we showed last time, and it looks at how many students are progressing to the next grade level. So you can see, as we talked about last time, we talked about that dip in sixth grade, for example, so you can see that 92 and that 90% progression ratio. So kind of a better way to look at this might be that graphic chart that they provided on the next page. So when you look at this, that red line is kindergarten. So you can see the volatility in terms of kindergarten, right? And that's an important thing that we really want to consider as we move forward to next year. When we look at our variance in our enrollment projections, kindergarten is where we've seen a variance between the number projected and the number we have. And what you can see on this red line is kind of that significant variance. So kindergarten never comes from that grade-level progression, because we didn't have all of those students enrolled the previous year. Kindergarten is really the number of births, right? It's the number of kindergarten students divided by the births five years earlier. So that's how they calculated this progression ratio. And then after that, in this graph, they've also graphed grades six, nine, and 12, right? Which you can see, there's less variation than kindergarten in terms of those grade-level progressions. What you can also see from this graphic, that I think was harder to see on the chart, is we've had more variance in our most recent years as compared to our previous years in terms of that grade-level progression, right? So something to think about as we look at our enrollment projections and how we haven't been as close between our actual and our projections in our most recent years. So this chart shows the accuracy of the projections that we've gotten from Weldon Cooper, going all the way back from 2007 to 2019. Right? So this is where you can see, on the left is the data, and then the right is a chart, right? And you can see that we've had more variations in terms of our differences between projected and actual in our most recent years. But if we look back over the long term from 2007 to 2019, right, we're at 99.7, right? So our accuracy overall is very good. And even the years where we've had variances, most recently FY19 and FY18, you can still see that all of those variances were less than 5%. So this next chart, if you remember the last time I was here, we showed the bottom line of this graphic, which is our current enrollment. So you can see currently, as of September 30th, we had 165 students in kindergarten, for example, 181 students in first grade. And you go all the way across, you see that K-12 total, that's what Weldon Cooper is projecting towards. We currently had 2,574 students, 71 students at JTP preschool, for a total enrollment on September 30th of 2,645. What I've done is, the chart on the top shows our projections for Weldon Cooper for the next school year. I color-coded them, kind of using the school colors to show you the students at each school. So when we look at next year, for example, at Mount Janu, we're projected to have kindergarten, first grade, and second grade, right? And all three of those together, a total of projection of 566 students at that school. So when I was talking about that variance and how tough kindergarten is to project, right, this is an example of where we currently have 165 students in kindergarten, and Weldon Cooper is projecting that we're going to have 207. And that difference is shown in that line in the middle. So they're projecting that we'll have 42 more kindergarten students next year than we have currently. So far, so good? So they're projecting we'll have seven fewer first graders, right? Four fewer second graders, going all the way across. So the total net difference that they're projecting for next year is 54 more students than we currently have on September 30th, right? And that's how you can see those projections by grade level.
Just as a side note, we thought it'd be good to teach, and again, we're about the same size.
So the last graphic that I wanted to show is the same data in a graphical form. So how do those projections look for each grade level? Our FY19, September 30th, actual enrollment is shown in red, and the projections for FY20 are shown in the blue line, right? Which I thought might be helpful. Some of those variances you see in the out-years of those groups of students moving forward. You know, so for example, where we had a large number of fifth-grade students this year, right, that kind of red spike, you can see that blue spike next year as that student group moves, right? And while, why that blue spike is lower than the red spike remembers our grade-level progression from fifth to sixth grade, we tend not to see all of the students that are in fifth grade move to sixth grade. So I hope that all of this data is just helpful and it provides a foundation as we really start to think about, you know, how many students for next year and start developing the budget. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Michael. Are there questions? Ms. Anderson, then to Mr. Ryan here.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Michael, I had a few questions, but probably the, there's some interesting quirks, like, why is 11th grade always seem to have this strange progression ratio? But we, this is the sorts of things that data walks tend to get into. What I'm curious about is the bigger question. I went back and looked at prior projections from '16 and '17 and '18, there's quite a steady drop in the total population that's being projected, and that would seem to have some fairly significant implications for capacity needs and designs and things like this. So although the accuracy of the projections, the year to, you know, this year projecting next year or last year projecting this year, seems to be pretty high, I don't know, how do we feel about the reliability over that long period of time? And so how much certainty should we have in that decrease and the implications that it has? it has for those?
I think those are absolutely excellent questions, right? I pulled this chart back up because I think this in some way illustrates a point that you're making. When you look at the growth that we experienced, right, going back, if we go back to 2009 and looking really to, you know, that's probably about 2015, we were experiencing some pretty steady increases in growth, right, that were a pretty fast kind of clip, right? And now we have those three kind of years where we've had two years of downward enrollment, right? So it was starting to slump. And you can see that Weldon Cooper here has adjusted the projections to still show growth, but it's much more moderated growth than we had previously, right? And I think you're absolutely right to look at, are these current three years a trend, right? Is it going to continue, right, or is it going to pick up? And I think in some sense, it's going to be impacted by what that birth decay ratio is, right? Have we just had a few years of smaller enrollment, right? And if we think back, you know, historically over time, was there anything going on that could have influenced that? You know, what I would say from a projection perspective is I think it's absolutely correct to really forecast that lower growth, right, long-term, to look at, are we really in a long-term downward trend versus just slowing growth? You know, I think another year or two of data is really going to highlight that. And I also think it'll be really important as we think of not only regional data currently, but also what other things are going on in the region and how will they influence our future growth, right? Whether it's changes in housing starts or new businesses moving here, other things that long-term could influence our enrollment.
Yeah, and what I'm thinking about is that slope is a lot lower. It's not just, certainly, there's a decrease the last few years, but that slope going forward is a lot lower. And if you look back to the projection, that slope two years ago would have been a lot steeper than, you know, it's coming down like this every time, which means when we look out to the capacity needed in the new high school, the capacity needed in renovations for TJ going into the future and things like that, the capacity needed is being projected at a level that seems to be going down fairly steadily and fairly significantly. If you look at the differences between them over, say, 10 years from now, it's a 10 or even 20% reduction in the original estimates from '16. So that's what I'm trying to figure out, is how do we, how much reliability they have in mind, and how much we are thinking about that, you know, is that slope likely to fluctuate one way or the other? It's got some implications for longer-term planning.
It absolutely does. And I think when we think of projections, you know, the students that we have, we really like to think about some of those bubbles moving through, right? And in part, now that we've had some smaller kindergarten classes, right, those are going to be some smaller numbers that are also going to move through that system or move through all of our grade cohorts we go forward, right? Another thing to truly think about.
One other consideration is that these data that Weldon Cooper look at don't incorporate in some of the development that's on, coming online for the city. So, for example, Flanders Road, the 10-acre development site is going to go up. There's going to be some inventory there that will allow families to move in, that will have potential yield, brand-new construction in one- and two-bedroom condos and apartments typically yield about a 1, a .17 ratio for every 100 students. So you get 17 kids out of every 100 units. So if we put 500 units across the city, we're yielding, you know, 170 kids. So I think, while it is hard to know, we actually know a little bit more about what the potential can be than Weldon Cooper does at the moment, because we're more aware of what's coming online, if that helps at all.
Yeah, and I think it's, I think it's important for us to make sure that we're giving that whole context when folks are looking at these data, because they'll draw conclusions that we might be, might be erroneous if they don't have all of that, so.
Mr. Renner.
So just one sort of nitpick.
Sure.
Sorry. The 99.7 accuracy percentage is, I think, statistically false, because that's an average of what it is. It just says they, they overestimate and underestimate roughly the same amount, as opposed to any degree of what their accuracy is, which would be an average of the absolute values of the differences. But separate and apart from that nitpick, I was thinking a little bit about some of the things Mr. Anderson was saying. I still want to see the historical chart showing where the kids are coming from by housing type, as soon as that's available. I think we probably need to look at this a little bit more. I, you know, historically, the city of Falls Church is always underbuilt when it built schools, so I'm very actually pleased that I think we've hit the right spot with the high school, with some room to grow, and then some additional room to grow on top of that. And there are other factors, you know, as you suggested, that could be coming into this. You know, for example, it may or may not be connected that we had a change in the administration about the same time we had a downturn in population, because there's much more of a de-emphasis on the federal government than there used to be, which could bring in fewer people. But we've also got, you know, HQ2 coming into Crystal City, and who knows what that will do? It may be absolutely nothing, but it may be a significant amount. So I just want to, I think, want to do the best we can to understand what the trends are and what's going to continue to happen. So the best thing I can think of is that start by housing type. At some point, we saw, which I'd like to look at again, overlaid on that was the, when new multifamily developments in the city came online, because that can show sort of a growth. And it would be sort of interesting to get a sense of what the, and this also comes from just the single-family homes piece, what the level of organic growth is. And it may also be that, you know, the, the amount of housing, houses that can be converted from a, you know, a three-bedroom, one-bath ranch into a six-bedroom, five-bath colonial is smaller than it used to be.
So Mary and King, our student data specialist, is working on that report, so we do anticipate that we'll have that for the board shortly in terms of the enrollment by housing.
Any other questions? Mr. Castillo?
Hey, Mr. Chair. I think another thing that's important to look at is the average household size, which I understand has been dropping. There was a report out recently about that. So I think, are the family units changing in terms of their average size? And will that give you, when joined with the type of housing, some better way of looking at things that'll allow you to forecast? But I am glad that our day of reckoning of having no more space is being pushed out farther to the right.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. Ms. Michael, for the presentation. Next, we'll be going to, second reading and adoption of policies, and we turn that over.
Great. For a second reading tonight, we have four policies. There were, the first policy is IEB National Motto. There were no proposed changes from the meeting last month. Any questions on the IEB National Motto policy? Hearing none. Next policy is IE Moment of Silence. There were a few proposed changes from the board. Those are reflected in the strike-through and the addition in red of the policy. Any questions on IE Moment of Silence, which would replace 6.10? Hearing none. Third policy for second reading is IEA, Pledge of Allegiance. This would replace policy 6.9, and there were some changes that were proposed in first reading that the board agreed with, so those are, have all been adopted, but there are no changes to this policy from first reading. Any questions on the Pledge of Allegiance? The last one for second reading is JHH Suicide Prevention. There were no changes to this from the last policy and, from first reading. And as a reminder, there were some proposed changes to the Virginia School Board's model policy based on input from our school psychologists and our school crisis teams. Any questions on policy JHH Suicide Prevention?
If, I would thank you very much, Ms. Anderson, for the presentation. If there are no questions from Ms. Anderson, I will entertain a motion for adoption.
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board approves second reading and adoption of policies IEB National Motto, IE Moment of Silence, JHH Suicide Prevention, and IEA Pledge of Allegiance as presented.
Thank you very much, Mr. Castillo. It's your second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. And then we are on to recommendation for additional non-workday for the first reading. Sorry, first reading. Sorry. Almost let you off.
That's all right. There are nine policies for first reading, but these hopefully are not too controversial or won't require too much time, although I welcome any questions that you have, and I appreciate the board members who did reach out to me with questions about these policies. The first three, BDDD, BDDE, and BDDF are three policies that would break out our current policy 2.21. Right now, policy 2.21 covers quorum, rules of order, and voting method, and the model policies just have that broken out. Policy BDDD Quorum follows word-for-word what was included in our previous policy or current policy 2.21. Any questions on quorum?
So just, this has come up before. Sorry, thank you, Mr. Chair. A majority of the board means a majority of the number of board members?
Yes. So quorum would be four, given that the number of board members we have is seven. Any other questions on BDD? Next up is Rules of Order BDDE. You'll notice that this has a fair amount of red line. I actually reached out to Elizabeth Ewing on this. The model policy had included as, included that the board can adopt regulations, whereas we make it clear that the superintendent adopts regulations, whereas the board adopts bylaws and policies. So working with Dr. Noonan, we had recommended removing regulations from policy BDDE to make it clear that the board's role is policies and the superintendent's is regulations. It also, the model policy says that it's up to the school board to establish a rule of order. I shared with Ms. Ewing that our bylaw 2.21 had specifically adopted Robert's Rules of Order, the newly revised version, except as otherwise provided by law in the policies. And Ms. Ewing thought that that was wonderful, because then you get, you don't get into the debate of, well, what is the established rules of order and when is that adopted? So I pulled the language from our policy 2.21 into policy BDDE, since it's my understanding that Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised, has worked for this board and has been what the board has followed for quite some time. So happy to answer any questions on this proposed BDDE Rules of Order.
Thank you, Ms. Renner. So do you have a copy of those Rules of Order?
I'm embarrassed to say I have a copy of Rules of Order for dummies, and I cover it up with a piece of paper, so it looks like it's just a generic version, but it gets to the highlights of what the issues are. And I do believe that Marie has the Rules of Order that she brings with us to meetings, so.
Okay, because the only thing I've noticed is the latest version always costs like a bazillion dollars. So maybe we should go with N minus one.
I think newly revised actually is the, a specific year's adoption. I want to say it was 20, no, this was 2011. So that's, that's true. It might be that the newly revised is the, is the most expensive of the versions.
Because the older ones are on the interwebs, but the, the latest and greatest is always a heavy lift financially.
So are you suggesting we take out newly revised?
Well, I'm, I'm thinking maybe we agree on, on one that is available online for, for economy purposes. Because, or that one. I mean, as long as, if we, the one we have, I think is probably as, as good as any, but it is, if you, if you look at the, what the current version is, it is expensive.
If it's all right with you all, I'd like to look into what the newly revised is, because this, the revised edition is not the same as the newly revised, which looks like that is available for $12 online. And I think that there's a, and that's the 11th edition, so I want to see that. So if I could get back to you all on, on whether I would suggest newly revised or revised or most recently revised.
Or revised standard or King James or whatever.
Any other questions on BDD? All right. BDDF is the voting method. This is almost word-for-word what is included in our current policy 2.21. There is one sentence included in 2.21 that says, "The meeting minutes reflect the results of votes, and votes aren't taken by secret or written ballot." But that's already incorporated into other policies that are coming before the board tonight, so I don't think that removing those two sentences from our policy changes the policy. There's also, you'll see, there's language that's been stricken through. The Virginia Code allows for elected boards to also, boards that are elected to also have an elected individual who serves solely as a tiebreaker in the event that there's a conflict or there's a, there's a tie vote of the board. And because that's not a process that we follow, as provided in the reference in the footnotes from the VSBA, that language has been removed. So removing that language makes the language verbatim what is included in our policy 2.21 minus those two sentences being removed about the minutes that isn't, would be redundant if we kept it in. Any questions about BDDF? Next policy, BDD, Electronic Participation in Meetings from Remote Locations is, would replace our current policy 2.23. The language is virtually identical, and this follows very closely the Virginia Code definition of electronic communication and quorum, and what to do when quorum is not physically assembled. I guess the, the high-level point of this that would be the same as our current policies is individuals can participate remotely if approved by the board, the reasons for their remote participation are shared, and quorum is already physically assembled. So you can't have someone participate remotely in order to get to quorum, but if a quorum is physically assembled, so if we have four board members present, and that's our number for quorum, board members, numbers five or five and six, or five, six, and seven could all participate remotely if they hadn't participated electronically previous two more times. Question?
So does BDDD need to reflect a majority of the board physically present?
I don't think so, because that quorum physically assembled is included in BDD, but it could be added to.
No, BDD isn't, though, I think. BDD, the first one we looked at, doesn't say physically.
That just tells us what a quorum equals. So a quorum is a majority of the board. So it tells you that the quorum would be four for our board of seven, but at BDD, Roman 1, paragraph A, it says, "So long as the quorum is physically assembled of essentially the four or more," which would then be a reference back to BDDD, then there can be electronic participation. So I think we could add it to BDD, but I think it would be redundant.
Okay. You're not getting paid by the word anymore now that you're on staff, so.
And that's okay. Any other questions on BDD? I do think that it's a little clumsy when I have to present the letters all in order, but I do think that it is, the organization system does make sense in how these are, are all structured. So I appreciate your patience as I fumble through the Bs and Ds and.
Maybe we go with BD cubed and BD squared.
That would work, too. All right. Mary?
Is there a policy ADDA?
There is not. I can say that with confidence. Anything else on BDD? There is a BDDA model policy. This is notification of school board meetings. This is very consistent with our current policy 2.24. There's a few word tweaks, but doesn't change the substance of it. The policy, line, "Starting with notification of closed meetings held solely for purpose of interviewing candidates for the position of superintendent," is one that is addition, added language to bylaw 2.24. Any questions on BDDA? And that language lines 24 to 31 of the policy. And that language lines 24 to 31 of the policy. No questions. Next is B D D C, agenda preparation dissemination. This is, has three words off from current policy 2.28, and I did get a question from Mr. Anderson on this, so I would pass that to you if you wanted to raise this, or I'm happy to do so.
Sure, thanks. And I can, okay, Mr. Chair. And I could actually highlight this for B D D G and B D B, just to save a little time, which is that all three of the policies use the word chairman as opposed to chair. And we've adopted previous policy with chair, and both for its sort of gender neutrality and, and also because it's consistent with our prior, prior practice, I wanted to suggest changing chairman to chair.
Does anyone have a, fine with that as well.
And the previous policy was policy B C A that was adopted in October 2017 that specifically changed from the V S B A model policies from chairman to chair for, for that reason. So, I can make that change in policy B D D C. Are there any other questions or comments on agenda preparation dissemination? None. B D D G is minutes. I can incorporate the same change to line that, of the first sentence, from clerk to chairman to chair. This is quite similar to our policy 2.29. There, our 2.29 includes information about requesting the minutes and the superintendent's authorization to charge for individuals who want copies and search time expended by school board employees to search the minutes. That's already included in our FOIA policy, so I don't think that that language from our policy 2.29 needs to come over into policy B D D G. And any other questions or changes for B D D G?
Mr. Anderson?
It's actually not a, a comment or question on the policy itself or on its application in this I'm, I'm asking around the room. Line 17 to 20 talk about minutes not being required at committees appointed by the school board, so advisory committees and so on. Certainly the ones that I've been involved with, minutes are being collect, are being kept. Is that a practice in the other advisory committees in general? And I'm, I guess I'm looking for.
Like daycare is a board, so I know they, they actually need.
She needs a mic.
Oh. I know that daycare is a board, advisory board, so they do need to take minutes, and those minutes are kept and, and kept for a period of time. So, as far as the other advisory committees, I believe that was up to the advisory committees, and I think most of them were trying to take minutes and put them online on their website so for people to keep up with it, with the, with the program.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Castillo?
Hey, Mr. Chair. Line 14 and 15 talks about closed meeting minutes don't have to be taken. I don't know what our practice is or how that is triggered. Do we need to address that, or is it just somebody moves at the beginning of close to keep minutes? I, I don't know.
I'll refer to Dr. Noonan, who has experience with this.
We have not traditionally taken minutes in closed in the City of Paul's Church. And it really is a decision of the board whether or not they'd like to keep those minutes. In my prior school division, we did keep minutes of, of those, those closed meetings, and it was a nice opportunity just to kind of track in case there were questions that came up later. We haven't had an experience since I've been here anyway with this board where there's been some questions about things that have come up in closed, so I would sort of perhaps bring that as a question for consideration with the board, maybe at an upcoming retreat or another time to decide whether or not we want to engage in a different practice going forward with, with respect to closed.
Well, I guess, right now, it's, it makes it sound as if that's a possibility, and maybe that's all we need to do. Do we need it at all then? Or maybe we just talk about that later?
You mean, do we need the sentence?
Do we need the sentence? Yeah.
Oh.
It's never happened, as far as I know, and so.
Let me, let me look into that to see whether that's language that, that follows from the Virginia Code that, that should be included in as an option or not.
Okay. Thank you.
If, if it's not required by the Virginia Code, is there a consensus to take it out or to leave it in?
I would prefer to leave it in, just because if we were to bring it up for discussion at a future retreat or whatever, I would be in favor of taking minutes at closed meetings.
But I guess with, with this comes, like, who would keep the notes? Who, so there's some planning that would have to go into this. I, I don't, I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing, but it does have some logistical ramifications, so we should think about that. If somebody moves right then and there in closed to say we need to take minutes, that'll be a problem.
Keep Marty close.
I was just going to say, I think having the later conversation about this at retreat was probably in our best interest, because ultimately I don't have a huge issue with it either, but it's probably logistical pieces that come with it if we were to at any point want to, to have those taken.
I can say that I'm going to be attending the clerks conference, so I'm going to be asking, how many are taking minutes of closed, and how do they do that? Because minutes typically are public, and of course, closed is not. So, do they keep them separately and forever and all those questions? So, I'll find that out.
Very timely question for Ms. Ray to have.
Anything else on policy B D D G, minutes? Next is policy B D B, special school board meetings. I will, I've made a note to incorporate Mr. Anderson's suggestion for changing from chairman to chair. There's a few word changes from this policy to policy 2.25 that we currently have, but right now, this language is consistent with what we currently do. You will see that there's a footnote here. Footnote one talks about how special meetings can be called by the chair or when requested by two or more members. The footnote notes that Virginia law doesn't specify who can call a special meeting, but it does require boards to specify what its own procedure is, and this procedure of having two or more members request a special meeting is consistent with what our current policy 2.25 requires. Mr. Anderson had also raised a question about the second paragraph, whether it should be set forth in the call, the meeting is not transactioned versus shall not be transaction, transacted. I think I could go either way on that. I don't know if the board has a preference for, for that second paragraph, the first sentence, the second paragraph. Go with Greg's. All right, I'll make that change. Last.
So, can I just ask one, one question as I read this through? Line seven?
Sure.
Says special meetings may be called, provided each member is duly notified or a reasonable attempt has been made. And then in line 14, says notice reasonable under the circumstances if special meetings is given contemporaneously with the notice provided to members of the school board. Are there two notices there?
So, there, this is saying that if there's a special meeting, there's a direct notice given to the school board members, and there's a notice that's posted publicly. So, we post it on our website, we post it outside our office, we post it over at City Hall. So, the idea is if there's going to be a special meeting, Marty, is this consistent with your experience? The school board members will be notified about that meeting at the same time that the public has noticed that it's on our website and that it's posted at City Hall.
Contemporaneously means somebody has to run over to City Hall the minute you hit send?
Um, it's, it's posted on our website the minute we hit send, and then we get it over to City Hall as quickly as we can. We do have, part of George's route is to go to City Hall, so that would be posted the same day, maybe not within the hour.
They also post for us if it's too close a time that I couldn't hear George, then I call City Hall, they actually post it for us.
And is what, is notice, is website notice considered sufficient?
That's a good question.
I'm just spotting issues here.
There is a policy on notification of school board meetings at B D D A that we're talking about, and it talks about the notice that is given. It does require notice on the website in a place, a prominent public location where notices are regularly posted, and at the office of the clerk of the school board. So, notice is, the, the type of notification that has to be required for school board meetings is generally outlined in policy B D D A. Anything else on B D B, special meetings? Okay, last one for first reading this evening is B G and G B D. So, it would be a policy that falls under both staff and, and school board, with B G being school board policies and, and the G policies being, policies related to staff. This is, you'll, you'll notice a number of changes, changing around the order of, of the model policy and removing some of the language from the model policy. Explanation of that, the sentence that's been removed at lines eight to nine, that a description of two-way communication system is included in this policy manual. That doesn't need to be included in the policy in my mind, since we describe what the two-way method of communication is. I also would suggest reordering the communicating of ideas by employees, since we specifically have adopted a practice of having the school board and the superintendent working with PEAK, SEEK, and EAK. So, we did add in a reference, if, looking at policy 2.19, that would be replaced by G B, G B D, we thought it important to include the advisory committee, since they do currently work with the school board and the superintendent, to bring issues to the attention of the superintendent and to the school board. We also added in that the superintendent is the sole employee of the school board and serves as its administrative officer in liaison with the school board, to, to make clear that that's the role of the superintendent, and the expectation is that the superintendent is the representative of the board. So, happy to answer any questions of the board here. I guess the only other, sorry, thing to point out in line 19, that the communication of ideas and concerns in an orderly and constructive manner to the board or to administrative staff should be funneled for review and action by the superintendent, just to make clear what's clear in other policies, that the board acts as, as a unit, not as individual board members, and that their sole employee is a superintendent. So, that would be the, expectation is certainly, staff members can speak to board members, but board members would, would funnel those concerns to the superintendent. Likewise, staff can, is encouraged to speak to administrative staff, but those are, those concerns are to be funneled to Dr. Noonan.
Any questions, Mr. Castillo?
Hey, Mr. Chair. That new sentence about the advisory committees kind of reminds me of the announcement at Dulles saying that the airport authority only endorses the Dulles taxi. So, they're saying, they're not saying you can't take a ride with whoever's accosting you, it just says they only endorse. Is that, is, is this saying employees should work through these committees, or is it just putting that out there? And I guess I would kind of ask Dr. Noonan how he views this process as working and if this is something he's comfortable with.
We've sort of had a, a behind-the-scenes conversation as well, and, and I think that in some ways, this is, this has been the communication structure. So, I, I wonder if there's a potential to say that the school board and superintendent work with employees in such ways as PEAK, SEEK, and EAK, just to make sure that it's wide enough so that any employee, if they are or are not affiliated with those organizations, could still be heard. I think that's sort of what your, maybe your point is.
Well, I'm just, I'm kind of asking, are, is this saying, and if you've got a concern, go here, or this is an option? If you just want to do anything else, that's fine? I, I don't, I, I don't know what kind of norm we want to set here about how we want this to work, because it's, 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 it's kind of wide open here as I read this, and so.
I think it was illustrative of, of organizational structures that were in place for employee grievances. I don't know that that's necessarily the only place you would go with an employee grievance. I would hope that, you know, they would go to their school administrator or whomever, so. And we've got that listed above.
I, I guess I'm just kind of asking, if you never knew anything about how this worked and you read this, would you know what you should do?
So, the specific Virginia Code, section 22.1, 253.13, colon, 7, section C, subsection 1, specifies that a school board has to come up with a system of two-way communication between employees and local school board and administrative staff, whereby matters of concern can be discussed in an orderly and constructive manner. I think it's playing it safe, which is something I like to do as often as possible, to have PEAK, SEEK, and EAK as options for two-way communication, but if that were to break down, or if it weren't, matters weren't discussed in an orderly and constructive manner, and we only directed staff members to PEAK, SEEK, and EAK, then I could see us coming, kind of being, being at odds with the intent of the Virginia Code, which is a constructive method of two-way communication. So, if, if PEAK, for example, doesn't think that their concerns are being heard, they're not being told that's the only, or if members of PEAK think that, that their concerns aren't being heard, or aren't being addressed, or they're not getting a response to it, I, I would be hesitant to limit it to, limit concerns to only being brought to these organizations. While I don't think that's going to be an issue, and I hope that it never is, I think having both in here, saying you can speak to staff members or administrative staff, that is to be channeled through the superintendent, and concerns can be brought through PEAK, SEEK, and EAK, with the overall goal of, of addressing the concerns of staff members, regardless of where those concerns are brought.
Can we, can we kind of noodle this a little bit offline, Tricia and I? Because one of the things that occurs to me, and, and we have FCC EA representatives here tonight, is I, I don't think all of our employees are part of PEAK, SEEK, and EAK. And, and as a consequence of that, I think it limits to a certain extent who would have an opportunity to have an open two-way communication. So, there may be some better, better ways to contemplate this, so. Let me go back and look at this one.
So, a couple of comments. One, on, on the point that Mr. Castillo was just raising. I, I guess I'm okay with it even as written, because it says encouraged. If it didn't say, if the wiggle room was not there, then I would have a lot of trouble, because obviously if, not that this sort of thing would ever happen, but let's say a, a school employee thought that you were embezzling, then I would think that it would be going straight to the board would be an appropriate mechanism as opposed to channeling their concerns through the superintendent. So, I think encouraged, at least some wiggle rooms necessary. The other thing is, I, I, I have a little bit of a concern about adding parenthetical and sole employee. The reason being is that is the current circumstance. That's not the only possible circumstance. For example, we could decide to make the general counsel employee of the school board as well, since it's true, but it's not necessary. I don't, you know, if we ever decided that we wanted a, a board attorney to be a full-time employee, whether that's you or a second attorney or whatever, we have to go back and change this policy where the language is not necessary. So, I would tend to, I mean, I, I don't really think it adds anything, so I would just not include that part of that.
Any other comments?
It'd be helpful to get a consensus on that, the removal of the parenthetical at line seven. Is that generally agreeable?
Yes. I, I don't necessarily have a dog in this fight, although I'm the one that added it. And I think the reason that I added it was more of a governance process than anything else. So, it might be important in why I added it, but if you want to take it out, it's line two.
Mr. Castillo?
I, I'm just peddling quickly here to look through the policies about what it says about the superintendent. You could say that the superintendent is presently the sole employee, or it's, he's, you could say he or she is just the conduit for information. I, I would, I guess I'd want to make sure this was aligned with everything else in the policies before we jump into this.
Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I would tend to support Mr. Anger's idea, but I also would suggest that as your, your I would tend to support Mr. Anger's idea, but I also would suggest that as you're, you're dwelling over this one, that would be something that gives some thought to. And I would just like to say that was a very impressive code site. I don't know that I could have read it quite last month.
Speed reading is my forte.
Are there any other comments, questions, before we move on for first reading? If not, for the last one that we were just talking about, do we, can we go ahead and move it within the group with first reading, and you all will look at it at that point, or?
Sure.
Okay. I will entertain a motion for first reading then.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Anderson.
I move that the school board approved first reading of policy is BDDD quorum, BDDE rules of order, BDDF voting method, BDD electronic participation in meetings from remote location, BDDA notification of school board meetings, BDDC agenda preparation and dissemination, BDDG minutes, BDB special school board meetings, BG slash GBD board staff communications presented with the modifications discussed.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Ms. Litten's over there looking wild that he got them all out without stumbling over it. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Litten. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, close. Thank you very much. Now we're on...
Maybe no aye, but there was a BG.
Now we'll move on to 8.10, recommendation of additional non-work day for 12-month employee. Dr. Noonan?
Thank you. Oops, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is actually a follow-on to something that the general government has looked at, and so Kristin Michael's prepared a piece for us.
So, thank you so much. We've had great collaboration this fall, as we've been working with human resources from the general government in terms of our benefits and other items. So they called and notified us that the city council had adopted a recommendation from the city manager to grant city employees a paid holiday, a full day, both on Christmas Eve, and then also a full day on New Year's Eve. So we're coming to, currently this school year, employees who are 12 months voted to have Christmas Eve as our flexible floating holiday this year. So we have Christmas Eve off. So our recommendation coming to the school board tonight is that you, in line with what the city council did for general government employees, grant to 12-month employees that New Year's Eve would also be a holiday. So 12-month employees wouldn't have to come to work. This would give people that four-day weekend, they would be off Saturday, Sunday, Monday would be the New Year's Eve holiday that was granted, and New Year's Day is currently a holiday. When we look at fiscal impact, there's no fiscal impact in terms of, we don't have any people who will be required to work on that day, so no one will be getting additional pay for working on that holiday. And potentially, if we don't have community use that day, we could recoup just some small savings in terms of utilities, but we didn't cite those here. So again, we're looking for your approval to grant 12-month employees with New Year's Eve as a non-work day or a holiday.
Thank you, Ms. Michael. Are there any questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Falls Street City Public School Board authorized an additional full-day non-work day on Monday, December 31, 2018, for 12-month school employees.
Thank you very much. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Castillo. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, close. Thank you very much. Next, we're on to future agenda items, and I believe we have some discussion for that. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Recent weeks, we've had a lot of conversations, both in meetings and people having one-on-ones, about a variety of topics that I think we could call board norms. We were talking about this one today, talking about whether we would do closed session minutes, and if so, how does that work? And so, you know, things like succession planning, and how do we communicate amongst ourselves about routine matters and keeping each other updated? How do we make sure we have representation at meetings, so, so that folks can cover all of the meetings that are going on, and things like that? It just strikes me that having further conversation generally around the topics of our norms, and actually trying to drive towards writing them down in some way, that we can then keep for ourselves, would be a good topic for a future, future meeting, and whether that leads to, if we can have that conversation in that meeting, or whether that leads to, let's talk about some ideas, and then we have a retreat later, sort of agnostic about, but it would be good, I think, that we start that deeper conversation, you know, maybe a future work session.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Does any board member have any potential comments about that?
My only, my only question is, didn't we have some written norms at that first VSBA retreat we had a few years ago?
I recall we talked about it, I believe, at our last retreat, and I don't know where that went necessarily. Did my due diligence when I went, but Dr. Noonan, if I recall?
I don't know about the VSBA retreat, but two retreats ago with the facilitators, we had talked about developing some common working agreements. And then, and then we, I asked for some, some working agreements, and then got a couple, and then the next retreat, kind of came back to it, and asked for those again, and I don't think we ever committed those to paper. So I think it would be a useful exercise to, just my own personal two cents would be, I think it would be useful exercise to do something like that. And I would really be, if I, if I had my brothers, I'd be, and we can have this conversation, as part of the conversation would be to have an annual retreat in the early part of the summer, either in late May or early June, that we just had on the books every year. And at that retreat, we'd kind of revisit the year, how did it go, what are some celebrations, what are some areas of growth, and then have a section there for governance. One of the things that I do think that we probably could get tighter around is the governance manual. That's actually, we have, but hasn't been updated for several years. So perhaps using this, potentially this first retreat in the summer, to go through the governance manual, talking about updating it, figuring out where we tighten up some of the, some of the things that might be in question, and sort of how we work together, might be a useful exercise. So I'm just kind of throwing that out there. In my last division, we did do that in the May-June timeframe. It was a half a day on a Saturday from eight to two. We covered a lot of ground, and it was on the books every year, and it was a nice opportunity. We updated the governance manual every two years, and then did sort of have a working agenda for that. And it replaced one of the meetings also, so it wasn't an additional meeting, it was a, in lieu of, just a thought.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan. Mr. Castillo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think, I just decided, I think it's a good idea, I think we should distinguish between housekeeping, general process and norms, because they're kind of different boxes. But, and I think also, we adopted a policy, or we reaffirmed a policy, that we do a self-evaluation, so that might be worth folding in for that whole process. But I think that's a good idea to elevate that. I still think it'd be interesting to try a post-mortem after every meeting, to see how we did, are we focused on what we are working on in the work plan, something like that? Give that a trial. So I think it's good, a good reminder, thank you.
Any other comments?
On my end, I think it is a good, something, I actually like that suggestion of potentially having the retreat on the books versus, I think struggling seems like yearly, to try to figure out when we all have the opportunity to be able to get together, retreat if we have it on the books of probably that window of time that you're suggesting, potentially would work the best, before we get heavily into vacation season, when kids are out of school and everything. I think it could potentially be a good timeframe to possibly do that. And then also on the, the other part of what Mr. Anderson was talking about, I do think we probably need to, I don't think it's memorialized anywhere, but talking about, of a succession actual planning of how we make that move. For me, do we do it, change yearly? Do we put in place a, every couple of years, and up to whomever is in leadership at the time of making that, like some type of planning, so that we can kind of make that transition a little easier, either every, if we chose to do it every year, or chose to do it every two years, of knowing whomever the chair is at the time, and the vice chair, that the succession plan generally leads to the vice chair after a year, two years moves up into the chairman's role for that next year to two years, and just kind of keep, continue that, where I think gives us all an opportunity to have the leadership opportunities within the board, and I think that's a, I think that's a good thing to have, that everybody gives that opportunity to, to have that, that experience and, and opportunities within the board. So are we looking at potentially having this conversation at a soon upcoming work session, or is there a timing that most folks are at least having the general conversation? Or leave that up to, to do that of our next work session, to have some conversation about it, or give a little time to think about? I think the only part of this that I would like to potentially have the conversation sooner than later, because it is coming up on that time of succession, at least the conversation of, I think having that one a little sooner than later, to kind of get a, so we can put something into place, versus I think we tend to, at a point when whomever's chair is ready to make that retreat back to being just regular board member again, we really kind of go scrambling, looking for someone to, are you interested in doing it, are you, you have time to do it? I think if we have a little bit more of a conversation before January, to have that conversation, and kind of see, and get a, get a feel for, and maybe put it in some type of a policy that we have of how, at least a starting point of how that planning kind of works. So I wonder if anyone has any, any thoughts about that?
Mr. Anderson?
I think I'd support maybe starting up that conversation soon, if we could even maybe do it at our next work session, if we're going to focus on that, but also then maybe just start figuring out what the other topics are to talk about at a future stage. So maybe we start with that, and then we can identify things that folks want to go. It's a thought.
Yeah, I agree, and in terms of timing, we've, we've got a whole bunch of stuff coming at us soon, so I think Mr. Anderson's right, it's, it's, let's do it.
Okay, we'll add it to the...
Let's have a conversation about that at our next work session next Tuesday.
Yep. Anyone else for any future agenda items? Mr. Castillo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We, we had talked about having periodic consultations with, with Dr. Noonan about how things are going, that's sort of a, you know, a evaluation, kind of check-in meeting. And I think that would be good to do, and I think it might be good just to make sure our, our security posture is good in terms of our infrastructure and our policies, because that continues to be an issue. I don't think that's as urgent as, as the check-in with superintendent, but I think it's always good to revisit some of those issues, just to make sure we're on top of things.
And you are correct, we did talk about having that periodic check-in, and I think probably getting close to that point to probably try to figure out a work session, probably work session works the best to have a closed, a closed meeting to have that conversation, and just checking in with Dr. Noonan at that point. So let's work on that. All right. If that it, we will move on to the report from the superintendent.
Thank you very much. Just a few items tonight. First is congratulations to our girls volleyball team for making it to the state tournament this year. Really a strong showing, went down to Pecosin, and unfortunately, lost to Pecosin, who's a very good team. Thursday, Chicago starts at the musical, Chicago, at the high school, we're excited about that. This Sunday, we will be hosting a Sunday series at the community center from two to four. This is the sort of big reveal, Stan Tech, Quinn Evans, and, and Gil Bain will be there to, to share where we are with the schematic design documents. I've had an opportunity to preview those with a number of people, and I will say the feedback's been excellent. I'm really excited to be able to share it with the community, because it is really a reflection of all of the feedback that we've received over the course of the last several months. Some really nice changes have happened as a consequence of the feedback, and the building's really starting to take shape. We did open the Family Resource Center over at Thomas Jefferson. There will be an update at the work session next week about the Family Resource Center, but just wanted to make sure that you all knew that Erica Zavala has now started over at TJ, and has stood it up, and we've put some, some information out there in the community about that. December 3, the League of Women Voters and the City of Falls Street Schools are going to co-host a school safety forum at the high school. And at that meeting, the intention is to sort of focus on overall school safety, but with a real focus on what the high school looks like. And so the first, it's going to be an hour and a half, first half hour's going to be Mary Gavin and myself, talking about what are current best practices out in the land, what is kind of mirroring our work sessions that we've had, what are our current practices, what are best practices, and how do we close the gap around those. We'll also hold a panel, that panel will include an architect from either Stan Tech or Quinn Evans, talking about safety and security, along with perhaps Tom Palera from school, or from public safety, perhaps Mr. Hills and a student, I'm trying to figure out, sort through the details of what that panel will look like, but it'll be a facilitated panel, asking about school safety and security. And then the last half hour will be a Q and A for all the people that are there, of the panel, and of Mary Gavin and myself. Again, I think it'll be a nice opportunity to talk about sort of what we're currently doing. And then the last thing, we shared this with some people, and they got really excited about it, sometimes maybe more excited than the actual information we're sharing with them, but we have opened up a public Wi-Fi. In case you didn't know, the City of Falls, when I got here, I was really surprised that there wasn't a public Wi-Fi available, but now we have a guest network that's available. So if you click on FCCPS-guest and agree to the terms, it's just a single click, and you get Wi-Fi. It's really important to us to be able to do that. We're asking our teachers oftentimes to use their own devices for tweet, to put out tweets, and to do some, some work, and instead of using their data, now they can use the guest Wi-Fi. And that guest Wi-Fi is behind the firewall, so you still have to, you know, still be some sites that are blocked if you're on the guest Wi-Fi, but it will stop folks from having to use their own data. That's it for me.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan. Any questions for the superintendent? Mr. Castillo?
Hey, Mr. Chair. Will there be a counselor at the League of Women Voters event?
Yes, thank you. I wasn't completely exhausted in my description of who else could be there, but likely a school counselor and social worker, a school psychologist as well. Because we are looking at it from both perspectives, the hardening and how we're supporting kids as well. Thank you for asking.
Any other questions? All right. All right, next will be our board and student liaison comments, and I will start down at the end with Ms. Litten, if you have any comments. Mr. Castillo? Ms. Russell? Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Attended the Gift and Talented Advisory Committee meeting on the first, and probably the most important thing to relate to the rest of us is, they determined sort of the focus for their agenda for the rest of the year, and they've got a few things they're going to be looking at in December, looking at professional development practices, and sort of what the schools have going on, and giving some... sort of what the schools have going on, and giving some thoughts on that one, to sort of help out there. In February, they're planning to learn more about tiger paws, and be able to hopefully then give some feedback and some explanation for folks there. And then in May, there's conversation about mental health and anxiety, especially as affecting gifted and talented students. So be coming back. And in April, meeting will be about enrichment changes at Mount Daniel, especially, and I'll come back with some more details.
Thank you very much. Mr. Reindert?
Just quickly, in the last week or the week before, there was a meeting of the Support Employees Advisory Committee that Dr. Noonan and I both attended. There were a lot of topics discussed. The one I wanted to flag for the board, because it relates to the budget, is the continuing question of substitute pay, and the difficulty of getting substitute teachers, and the need to address that. So I'm sure that as we see the superintendent's budget and the proposals coming out of FCCPS, we'll hear more about that, so.
Thank you very much. Litten?
December 2nd, sorry, it's a Sunday, December 2nd. Sorry, December, yeah, December 2nd. December 3rd is the joint meeting in the city.
Do I have any comments either? And then on to, there are, just a quick go-back, just to say how much I'm looking forward to seeing all of you at VSBA this year. Thank you for participating.
It'll be my first VSBA in a while, because I normally am out of town on business travel, and I did not have that this year, so it's looking forward to joining everyone down in Williamsburg for the next couple of days.
We have three sets of minutes for approval. Last announcement sent for the approval of the minutes on July 11th, 2017, October 9th, 2018, and October 16th, 2018, without objections, so ordered. There are materials for review of the FCCPS enrollment. And if, are there any other questions, comments, anything for the go-to-do order? If not, we stand adjourned. Thank you all very much. Everyone travel safely to Williamsburg tomorrow.
Yeah.